We are going to open up the meeting for the Parks and Community Services Commission interviews, and we're going to make some selections tonight. And we have four vacancies to consider. Each, as we go through the process, each candidate will be given a total of 20 minutes. And the way this is going to work, we're going to have two minutes of opening, two minutes of closing, and then each council member will have one question, and each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. So, again, we've got four positions to select tonight. This Parks and Community Services Commission is a very important position. Just keep in mind, this is different than an advisory committee. It's very important that we pick the right individuals, because we, as the city council, depend on the commission to take on some of the role of the city council, such as park approvals, design, amenities, things like that. There are varying degrees of experience and skills that these candidates can bring to the table, as we've seen in their packets. And we need the commissioners to know that our, we need them to know about our diverse community and our vision for the future. So, we obviously want to pick the right person, but let's be open-minded about who that right person is, and think about the long-term strength of this commission. Again, many good candidates. We've got four seasoned commissioners. There's also the potential to have some mix of seasoned experience and new ideas from less experienced commissioners, who could easily be mentored by the more experienced commissioners and the park staff. So, let's try to think long-term. Let's try to think about continuity over the next several years, and select strong commissioners to deal with our rapidly changing city. There's a whole combination of factors to keep in mind, not just the application that we've already seen, and the interview about what we're going to hear tonight, but their overall body of work, their experiences, their understanding of our parks and the programming, and also understanding of our evolving demographics. We should also consider their potential. So, let's stay open-minded, and keep in mind the importance of all these factors. Now, before we get going, let's have a brief discussion. We are going to pick four primaries tonight. There's an option we have to pick some wait-listed people, and I'd like to hear the council's thought on picking a couple wait-listed positions as well.
Well, may I speak?
Go ahead.
I actually think this is, that's a great idea, and I think it's, well, one, it's an efficiency factor, to make sure we make the most out of our interviews right now, and the people who step forward and demonstrated interest. And I also think, you know, it gives, you know, for those who maybe just quite don't make this cut, they still have, you know, the hope and opportunity to potentially eventually come on board. And, of course, you know, the recommendation was made, it's only if there is a vacancy in the first year for some reason, but if it's after that time, obviously, we would go through this process again.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this?
I concur. I believe it creates good continuity, and so we don't have to continue interviewing folks. Just my one question, though, is, would the alternate be copied on emails, communication? Would they be able to, how?
Well, I think that's the difference between an alternate, where I would expect them to actually attend and participate and things like that. This is more of waitlisting.
Waitlisting, yeah.
Someone, so that if, all of a sudden, somebody unforeseen does a resignation, or cannot no longer serve on the commission, then we can at least give the first opportunity to the waitlisted people.
Ah, okay.
And go from there.
I agree.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Any thoughts?
I agree with Councilmember Rubio on that, and also, in addition to Councilmember Rubio's comments, this can give also opportunity for waiting list candidates to be themselves prepared, ready for their future commission if they want to participate. So, that's a good motivation for them to prepare themselves ready for becoming permanent in future. So.
I like that idea.
Okay.
Sorry, my mic was off.
Same. Richard? Okay.
Are we starting, what's the order of questions?
Well, let's decide on the waitlisting decision first, and...
I don't have it. I agree with what I heard.
Okay. Just to make it official, can I get a motion that we waitlist two additional people in priority order one and two?
I will make the motion.
I second it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing done, then we will waitlist two people in priority order one and two. Again, I kind of gave my opening comments. Who would like to go first? Does anyone have a preference? And why don't we, why don't we go by, we'll start with Councilmember Adler, Councilmember Juwina, Councilmember Rubio, Vice Mayor Veros, and then myself. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, with that, any other administration we need to take care of? Otherwise, we'll call in our first candidate.
You're fine.
Okay. Let's bring in our first candidate, please.
Would you like for me to announce the candidate?
No, that's okay. That's okay. And just a reminder to the council, this is being recorded, video-recorded. And Kyle, just to confirm, you are aware that we're video-recording this evening?
I am, yes.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, good evening. You are our first candidate, Kyle, and this is the way it's going to work tonight. We've got 20 minutes per candidate, and we'll give you the opportunity to do two minutes for an opening. Then each council member will have one question for you, and we ask you to hold your response to two minutes. We're going to time that. We're going to ask you to keep to two minutes. We'll give you a 30-second warning, and then we'll offer you two minutes at the close if you want to say anything additionally. And with that, the order will be Councilmember Adler, Councilmembers Juwina, Councilmember Rubio, Vice Mayor Veros, and myself.
Okay.
With that, we are ready to begin, and feel free to take notes, or ask for, or repeat the question, or whatever. Okay. Councilmember Adler.
Hi, Kyle, welcome. And I'm going to ask the question, and then I'm going to give you two minutes. I'll start a timer, and I will try to give you a little idea of how far along we are in that two minutes, so maybe answer, sum up what you need to... Okay, I'm going to start my question. Recently, the city of San Ramon has had to manage budget challenges with more limited financial resources. Given the number of parks our city currently has, how would you balance between investing in current park infrastructure and adding more parks? And I'm going to start the timer now.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Mayor Armstrong. Thank you, members of the city council. It's always a pleasure, and I appreciate having this time with you. Real quick, I'll just, I think this council is very...
Actually, I apologize. I didn't give you your two minutes for an opening statement, so you got a heads-up on the question, but go ahead with your opening statement. My apologies.
Okay, no worries. Well, I think this council is pretty familiar with my background and resume, but just for the record, and to refresh people's memories, and for those watching, my name is Kyle Levy. I've been a San Ramon resident for over 25 years, and I've been serving on the commission for the past two. My day job is administrative project management for the Castro Valley sanitary district, which has given me a lot of insight into capital improvement programs, infrastructure maintenance, preparation of municipal budgets, board reports, things like that. Simultaneously during my service on the commission, I've also served as secretary of the San Ramon Library Foundation, as chair of a bond measure oversight committee for the school district, as campaign treasurer of the residents for San Ramon, yes, on Measure N sales tax campaign, and also recently joined the board of the San Ramon Valley Education Foundation at the invitation of that organization. So, I've definitely tried to be involved in this community. I'm here reapplying for, or to continue my service on the commission, because I've really appreciated the opportunities it's given me to learn about the issues and challenges facing the city, in terms of budget, in terms of the growth that's occurring in the city's downtown, in terms of the diversifying population that we're facing, and the information and the presentations and decisions that I've been involved in so far on the Parks Commission have really given me a lot of knowledge to offer useful advice. And I'd like to continue and build upon that service, and I look forward to your questions.
All right. Thank you, Kyle, for the opening. And now, over to Councilmember Adler. We'll give you the chance to state that question again.
Okay. Recently, the city of San Ramon has had to manage budget challenges with more limited financial resources. Given the number of parks our city currently has, how would you balance between investing in current park infrastructure and adding more parks? And you can start now.
Okay, very good. No, I think it's an excellent question. San Ramon has almost 60 parks currently, with a few more on the way. So, it's, I think there's certainly a huge quantity of existing facilities that the city has done a great job maintaining. But, as you alluded to, we certainly face some budget constraints, which has caused prioritization of maintaining some of those facilities to kind of be staggered, or find phased approaches were possible. And I think prioritizing the existing infrastructure, as opposed to, you know, acquiring brand-new ones or opening new ones, I think has to be the priority. I think, with one exception, and that exception is, the, there is a bit of a disparity in terms of park facilities in Doherty Valley versus the west side of San Ramon. And, you know, the reason for that is, the development that occurred in Doherty Valley over the past 20 years, prioritizing, you know, new parks and new schools, and all those new community facilities there, did take priority, because it was kind of assumed that development in the west side and the city's downtown was over at that point, which, you know, little did we know, that would not be the case. So, that has led to a reevaluation of the development occurring on the west side of the city, which has meant that there is a challenge of finding park facilities to accommodate all those new populations that will be moving in there now, and moving in there in the next few years. I think there's a couple ways to address that. There are some existing city lands there that are being, not really reaching their full potential, like the Henry Ranch property.
One second.
Okay. The Henry Ranch property, one, the Crocanian Gardens, which has been underdeveloped for a long time, and we have some plans to improve the use of that. And just in general, also exploring publicly-owned, privately, I'm sorry, privately-owned, publicly-accessible partnerships with some of the developers that are happening there, to help make some facilities that are usable by the populations that'll be going into that area as well. So, I think that's kind of the balance that we need to strike.
All right, time.
Okay. Thank you, Kyle. All right. Councilmember Juwina, your question, please.
Hey, Kyle. What's your approach to evaluating whether a park project or program delivers added value to our community?
Sure. The city has, through significant, you know, time and effort, developed master plans. Specifically, I'm referring to the Parks Trails Open Space and Recreation Master Plan, which was developed with a significant amount of community input at the time, and on an ongoing basis. And so, I think my approach is to evaluate any, you know, proposed projects through the lens of the master plan. Do they comply with the priorities that were specified in there, which were devised in part by listening to residents, and then kind of comparing that feedback to what's actually possible and achievable with the resources the city has. So, looking for how projects tie into the master plan, I think, is absolutely essential. The master plan is also a living document, and, you know, what was true five years ago when it was developed may not necessarily be true today. So, I think engaging in a process of, are the priorities that we're addressing, addressing the priorities of today, are the priorities from five years ago that are no longer relevant? So, the master plan isn't a be-all and end-all. I'm not saying, you know, the text is said in stone, but I think that's a good starting point, that all work plans and kind of priorities of the city do have to, you know, stretch back to and tie into. So, just kind of being aware of that, and the larger framework that these projects fit into, I think, is my approach, and just sort of always trying to approach it with that mindset.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Rubio.
Hello, Kyle. Thank you for joining us. My question is, what programs can we implement for young and/or single adults in San Ramon who are seeking more social connections and a healthier lifestyle?
Ooh, a question that goes right to my heart, because that is the demographic I fall into, exactly. Yeah, I do think that's an underserved program, not whole, but just sort of an area where there could be more programs devised and implemented. I think, again, a lot of the shape of what that looks like should come out of, you know, surveys and community feedback, both gathered, you know, during the master plan development and on an ongoing basis. I do know that one of the key priorities that is being addressed now is really expanding the use of the city's trails system, which I think, you know, appeals to sort of, you know, younger, active residents, who are looking for that kind of weekend adventure in their own backyard, and helping to increase programming and the amenities for the city's trail system and the open spaces, and kind of, you know, providing those kind of opportunities to connect with nature on the weekend, you know, away from your nine-to-five-day job. I think that's a huge priority, and I think a good way of addressing some programming for that demographic that also kind of ties into the city's vision as a whole. So, that's certainly something I've pushed for during my time on the commission, and I'm pleased that there's been a lot of progress in that area. And that's my thought.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Veros. Hi, Kyle. Thanks for your services, and thanks, appreciate for reapplying. And my question for you, what strategies would you implement to develop sports and community programs that not only serve our local residents, but also attract visitors and promote tourism in our community?
Hmm, it's definitely always good to try to get the two-for-one, or three-for-one, or four-for-one value-added by hitting more than one of those priorities with this kind of program. So, I like that you, your question is to help address more diverse populations, but also attract tourism and kind of promote San Ramon as a whole. So, with that preamble said, I think the city has done a good job responding to some of the groups that have those specific concerns, particularly in sports with like, with the cricket facilities and amenities that San Ramon has. Really been a regional leader in championing and kind of putting in. I know the cricket pitch at Quail Run just opened, and that's just, you know, there are several other things that also address that. I think developing those kind of community partnerships more with the existing interest groups, and having the city work with them to kind of figure out what their needs are, and how can we maybe plan to address some of those needs in future projects and future developments, is a way to help meet the needs of that demographic, both with, you know, programming and events, and then also hope that those events can, you know, be of a large enough scale to actually attract outside visitors and attract outside business while those kind of events and tournaments and things like that are going on. So, there's a lot of different ways that it can be addressed, but I think it has to start with kind of reaching out to who's already in that space, who's already doing things, and then figuring out how the city can help them, and in appropriate ways, how the city can help promote those goals, and tie things into the facilities and events and programs that the city already has. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Kyle, my question, and this is the last formal question before your close. San Ramon has a limited budget and a growing demographic diversity. We especially have a fast-growing senior population. How well do our parks currently respond to the needs of our senior or our mobility-impaired residents? And what can we reasonably do to make improvements, given that there are so many other competing priorities for our limited funding? Be specific, and if you can, and cite specific parks and areas of concern.
Sure. Yeah, it's a significant concern. The city's population, while it's at the same time diversifying, is also getting older, and figuring out how to make parks more accessible and provide more amenities that specifically take that demographic into account is crucial. Shade structures in city parks has been prioritized as a sort of ongoing rolling improvement plan over the last few years, and I don't see any reason why that should stop. I think every park in this city should eventually have some kind of shade structure. And then, you know, there's always the question of shade structures on the Iron Horse Trail, which is, you know, deficient in that area, but also not totally within the city's purview, since that's East Bay regional parks as well. So, that has to be taken into account. Besides just shade structures, paved walking loops, I think, is also crucial to encourage exercise and activity by that demographic, but in a safe way, so they're not stumbling or walking on soil that gets muddy in inclement weather. You definitely want paved, even walking surfaces, so that there's no accidents or injuries. Specifically, I know one park that's heavily used by an older demographic, because it's in my neck of the woods, is Athan Downs, which does not have one of those paved walking loops currently. It looks like it's supposed to, but it kind of cuts off, and I think that is something that the city could look into addressing and planning for an improvement for. Beyond that, I think, just partnering further with the senior advisory committee, and to get more specific feedback about that, particularly as we look into doing a comprehensive update on the Parks Master Plan, I think would be important to see, you know, how well are we addressing the needs of that demographic, and what can we do more to help address that demographic's needs in, for the next few years or the foreseeable future? I think that's really the approach we need to take at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, that was everybody, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, very good. Kyle, we'll give you a chance to say, closing comment here. Anything, you know, our questions were all over the place. You had only limited time for the answers, but there may be more you want to say, so this is your opportunity.
No, I, again, I really appreciate the council's time, and I truly appreciate the trust that the council put in me two years ago by appointing me to the commission. I've really enjoyed the experience, and I've really enjoyed the information I've been able to learn, the community groups that I've been able to learn more about, the demographics I've been able to learn more about. One thing I do want to quickly touch on before I wrap up, that didn't really come up in the questions, is ensuring that our amenities are reaching populations that are underserved, not just, you know, seniors or others, but special-needs children. And the reason why I bring this up is, there was a public comment from a mother of a special-needs child before the Parks Commission a few months ago, about her child has an issue with running away and not being able to be called back or respond to her calls when playing at public playgrounds. And so, she asked if it would be possible for the city to consider a playground structure that had like a little perimeter fence to try to keep them from running off in a safe, controlled way, and it wouldn't hurt the demogra, it wouldn't hurt the aesthetics of the playground structure, it would just be an amenity the city could offer. And that's a, and a good example of something the city could consider, especially as part of the Parks Master Plan update, and, you know, the next one that's being done, to help prioritize that demographic. And that's information that I wouldn't really have known or learned about if I hadn't been serving on the commission. So, I think that's a good example right there of how the community can interact with the commission, and how we can take that feedback into account, and use it to make changes that positively impact the residents of the city. And I just wanted to touch on that before I wrapped up. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Kyle, and we, again, we thank you for coming in. We thank you for your current service on the commission, and we will make a decision this evening, and the clerk's office will get an answer out to you, and, but again, thank you for applying and coming in.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Night. All right, let's see. We started a little bit late, had a little bump here and there, but it looks like we...
We finished early.
Finished okay.
Almost five minutes.
Yeah.
Pathetic sign, hopefully, for Tim.
Yeah. All right, have a seat, please. Yeah.
Great.
And thank you for coming in, and you are?
Todd Flavio.
Okay, hi, Todd. I'm, I don't know if our names are up here or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can see who we are.
Yes.
We're doing interviews tonight, as you know, for the Parks and Community Services Commission, and this is kind of how it's going to go this evening. We are going to give you two minutes at the beginning for an opening statement, and then each council member will ask you one question.
Okay.
So, it's not going to take too long. Be two minutes per answer for each of those questions, and at the very end, we'll give you an opportunity for a closing statement, another two minutes for a closing statement. Total time, elapsed time, will be 20 minutes, no more than 20 minutes. We're trying to keep it on a schedule. We have a lot of applicants this evening. And we are going to use a timer just to kind of help us discipline on those two-minute timings, and we'll give you a 30-second heads-up if you start getting close to one of those limits. And feel free to ask us to repeat a question if you want to clarify, take notes, you know, clarify or something like that. No points taken off or any of that, but we're looking forward to hearing what you have to say, so...
Great.
With that, why don't we go ahead, and just to let you know, we have received your application packet. We've read through that.
Great.
And, but go ahead and start with your two-minute opening.
Okay, great. Well, it's, it's great to be here and talking with you guys. So, I've been a San Ramon resident for six, six years. Prior to that, I was in Danville for 25 years. You know, I look at this opportunity as just an extension of my community service. You know, I've been active in our community for a number of years through San Ramon Valley leadership. Did a lot of things at the Danville Chamber, was on the board there. You know, my background, my undergraduate degrees in landscape architecture, too, which also gives me a unique perspective. So, you know, I look at this as a new opportunity, you know, one that I've had some great experiences with as being a user, which I think is vital to any input and changes and administer, administration, and, you know, it's also a great opportunity right now, because there's a lot of things happening, as well as challenges. And I look forward to both of those, you know, the challenges being with, you know, funding is limited right now, the economy is going into, you know, a area where it could be challenging for some communities, but there's a lot of great things happening in our community. The Master Plan Trail is one of those. Our community has talked often about interconnecting trails, Iron Horse Trail upgrades, things like that, so there's a lot of great things happening. There's also an agenda item I know that's very important about the Parkland amount for 2035, so that creates some unique opportunities. But I look at these as truly opportunities and an extension of me, you know, serving in my community to help, you know, make it better for everybody.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And the first question will be by Councilmember Adler, then we'll go to Councilmembers Juwina, Councilmember Rubio, Vice Mayor Veros, and then myself.
Okay, great.
So, first off, Councilmember Adler.
Yeah, welcome, Todd.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to ask a question, then I'll start the timer.
Sure.
Give you your two minutes. Recently, the city of San Ramon has had to manage budget challenges with more limited financial resources. Given the number of parks our city currently has, how would you balance between investing in current park infrastructure and adding more parks? And you can begin now, ask that.
Great. So, there's two important themes here, accessibility and sustainability, as well as stewardship. And what's important about those challenges right now is, we've all got to be more creative in terms of how we sustain our growth, and, you know, San Ramon has had tremendous growth over the last 25 years. Infrastructure, for some uses, is going to be, you know, there's going to need to be upgrades going forward, but there's a number of resources that we can all utilize. You know, one of them is utilizing our state financing. You know, we obtained a grant for one of the overpasses, which was significant in our development of that, so there are grants available. There's a lot of active groups out there to help us meet goals such as acquiring land and continuing to make our community, you know, safe and accessible for everybody. You know, we, one of the many benefits of this community, too, is we have a lot of great feedback, and that helps us manage our growth and do it in a sustainable way. But one of the many things that I learned, you know, as an undergraduate, was stewardship is vital, and it's a very important aspect. And I think growth has to, has to be managed, again, in a way that's accessible to all, but is sustainable, and...
Three seconds.
Okay. As well as, you're very conscious of what, what is the highest priority. And I think that's another area that will help us maintain our financial limitations with growth, is really prioritizing what projects and what amenities are most important for our community.
Very good.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Juwina.
Hey, Todd, good evening. My question is, what's your approach to evaluating whether a park project or program delivers added value to our community?
Well, there's a number of ways that we can measure that. As a... As I said, one of them was, you know, one of the best examples right now is the master plan or the, the trail plan input and survey that, that, that is out right now. That was a result of public feedback and, and their strong voice in, in helping us, or helping you guys decide on what's important for growth. So I think, you know, there's a number of ways. You know, we can measure the success with usage. We, we can also monitor trends and other uses in other areas and communities to see what's most important to them. Again, continuing with our objectives. And again, one of them, again, is interconnecting our trail system, as well as managing, you know, that growth with development, with a growing population that's expected to increase over 10,000 people in 10 years. So I think there's a number of ways that we can help do that in, in a, in a proper and sustainable way.
Okay. Councilmember Rubio.
Thank you. Good evening, Todd. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yes.
My question to you is, what programs can we implement for young and/or single adults in San Ramon who are seeking more social connections and a healthier lifestyle?
Well, I, I think in a lot of ways, we've already created a great baseline with, we, we've got great community input. We've got great community activism. I, I think participation is high with, with usage, with our facilities and resources. So I, I think the baseline has already been set, but I, I think we need to also look both within our, our current environment as well as outside to learn more about what's, what's serving those segmented, segments of our community. You know, we, we know that over the next 10 years, we have a very diverse community to begin with, but that diversity is going to increase. And so, again, it comes back to a lot of the same things about accessibility and making, you know, all the resources available to everybody. So I don't, I don't have any specific ideas in place for those particular segments, but I will say that being somebody that hasn't been in the weeds, so to speak, gives me a unique perspective to also create, to have input. And again, as an end user, also provide important feedback on how we grow programs like that.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Over to Vice Mayor Veros.
Hi, Todd. Thank you for applying for this position.
Sure.
My question is, what strategies would you implement to develop sports and community programs that not only serve our local residents, but also attract visitors and promote tourism in our community?
Again, I, I feel like in so many ways, there's a great baseline that's already been created, where we've got a lot of fields. We've got a lot of resources for, for, for the people that live here, as well as the people that participate in activities. So I, I think there's always additional promotion that we can do because we know that use sports, it has a very big impact on this area for usage, as well as involvement and for families. And I think continuing to emphasize the usage of our fields, the uniqueness of that, as well as all the other resources and amenities that are, that are nearby, I think will continue to help promote this area and, and increase the usage of our fields. From afar, and again, this is from afar, there's, we can always better manage our, our fields and resources, too. I know there's, there's, you know, I, all my children are older and adults right now, but there was a time in this community where I felt like every field was being utilized at a certain time, that there was a strong desire for fields and, and use and having those resources. So I, I think we all have to be mindful of trying to make every field and every sport, every activity, every cultural aspect accessible and to utilize our, you know, what we, what we've built in as many ways as we can.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Todd. So this is your last question before you get to do a close.
Okay.
I'll start off with a, kind of a statement, then a question, so.
Okay.
San Ramon has a limited budget and growing demographic diversity. We especially have a fast-growing senior population. So here's the question: How well do our parks currently respond to the needs of our senior or mobility-impaired residents? And what can we reasonably do to make improvements, given, given that there's so many other competing priorities for our limited funding? So be specific and cite specific parks and areas of concern if you can.
Okay. I'll try my best. Yeah, we've already, we, we all have identified that the, you know, the, that segment of the population will continue to grow. I think what's super important on a local level, and I'm saying just within this immediate area, where we've got higher density and we've got, you know, attraction to, again, an aging population as well, that we need to rethink about those spaces and accessibility as well. I know it all falls within the master plan, but I, I think there's, as we continue to grow and that evolves, I think there, there needs to be additional evaluation about how those smaller spaces fit together with, with the big master plan, so to speak. So I, I think, you know, again, surveys, I think, are, are very impactful. Data-driven decisions are super impactful. I, I think for everybody that's involved, the more we talk to the end user and learn about their experiences, what, and what is important, I think really helps us to, to help grow and to move in the right direction. So it's hard for me because I don't know all the parks and the ins and outs. I wish I was more involved with the exact parks, but it's hard for me to answer in specifics.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. With that, that's the, the final question. So we're going to, that was quick, right? Not too, not too painful. We'll turn it back over to you because our, our questions only touched a few areas, and there may be some other things on your mind that you want to get across to us, for us to consider. So you get another two minutes to tell us whatever else you want.
Okay. Well, again, I appreciate the opportunity to, to talk about this with you guys. Again, I, I think we've identified some key challenges for us over the next few years, as well as some great opportunities. And again, there's, there's tremendous, there's already a baseline of success in this community, and continuing to, to anticipate what areas of growth are going to be needed are, are super vital. So I think, you know, I, I think managing growth is probably the biggest challenge in, in this community, as we, as, as I've mentioned, has grown tremendously over the last 25 years. And it's, and it's been done in a very thoughtful and systematic way, which is what has helped the growth. And I think it's going to get, it's going to continue to be more challenging as we try to meet our parkland goal of 2035 and, and also work with limited budgets. And I, and I think having somebody that, again, understands, you know, the big picture as well as some of the details, but also looks at this as true opportunities. And, you know, there's some things that are going to be challenges, and we're going to get through them. But, you know, there's definitely a lot of things that are happening that will continue to, to grow our community, especially with parks and recreation, and will continue to, you know, make this a very desirable place to live.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Todd. Appreciate that.
Great. Thank you.
We, just so you know what the process is here, we're going to make a decision tonight. This is early in the evening. We've got a lot of different candidates. We will make a decision. You'll, you'll get an information about what the outcome is. But we do want to say thank you for coming in. Thank you for applying. Thank you for your interest in this Parks and Community Services Commission and, you know, in that, your, and your opportunity to make a difference, to make San Ramon a great place to live, so.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
All right.
All right. Good. Well, we, I think we generally on our timeline doing okay? Everybody doing okay so far?
Yeah.
Any adjustments needed? Are you okay? All right. Say again? What are we doing on the schedule?
We got three more. We have three more before our break.
Oh, but we're kind of right on schedule here.
Mm-hmm. Next one's 6:00 PM, right now.
Yeah.
To be exact.
All right. Good evening, Vasanth. Have a seat, please.
All right.
And you can see by our name tags who's here. Councilman, I've got myself, Mayor Armstrong, Vice Mayor Veros, Councilmember Adler, Councilmember Rubio, Councilmembers Juwena. And we want to thank you for coming in and expressing an interest in the Parks and Community Services Commission. And this is kind of how it's going to work this evening. You're going to have the opportunity to make a two-minute opening statement, if you need the, the full two minutes. And then each council member has just one question. And we'll go down the line. We'll kind of rotate. It'll go first by Councilmember Adler, then Councilmembers Juwena, Councilmember Rubio, Vice Mayor Veros, and then myself. And then at the end of the questions, then we're going to give you the opportunity to make a closing statement, another two minutes. And then we'll kind of explain the process. So total interview time should not exceed 20 minutes for you. But feel free to ask any council member to repeat a question or clarify something, or take notes if you need to, and, and that sort of thing, so. And they'll, they'll be timing. We're going to try to kind of discipline ourselves on the two minutes. So we'll have a timer. We'll give you a heads-up when it gets to about 30 seconds left, if you get that far into a question or something.
Every question has a two-minute for, to answer.
Two, two-minute opening, two minutes per question, two-minute closing.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. And with that, why don't we go ahead and, and hear a two-minute opening from you?
All right. Good evening, respected mayor and dear council members. Thank you for considering my application for the interview. It is my honor today to sit in front of you and pitch my candidacy. So to introduce myself, I am Vasanth Chetty. I am a resident of San Ramon for over 10 years now. And education-wise, I have finance and business degrees. And experience-wise, in the corporate world, I've been in many leadership positions in multiple companies. Now, switching to the family side, I have, me and my wife, Prema, raised the two daughters who went to San Ramon School, who exclusively made a very good use of all their parks and the community centers, swimming pools, et cetera. Now they are young adults, so they are out of the home, so have some extra time, so why not to invest in the good purpose, right? So that's on the family side. Coming to the civic experience, in the past one and a half year, I did complete the government 101, Planning Academy, Police Public Academy. That course was successfully, very highly valuable, learnt a lot. And in addition, I also enrolled for the Leadership San Ramon. And fortunately, my application got accepted. That will be starting in August, so I look forward to that education as well. So this is on the program side.
10 seconds.
In addition, I also, in the past, I was a EDAC committee member. And also, I contested the San Ramon City Election in 2024, which gave me a good insight into the challenges of the city. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And sorry I didn't give you the 30 second.
No, no problem. That's perfect.
I was listening to what you had to say, not paying attention to my timer. All right. We'll go to the first question with Councilmember Adler.
Yeah, welcome, Vasanth. My question is, recently, the city of San Ramon has had to manage budget challenges with more limited financial resources. Given the number of parks our city currently has, how would you balance between investing in current park infrastructure and adding more parks? And I'm going to put the timer start now.
Good question, council member. Currently, we are at 84,000 population, and it is projected that in another 10 to 15 years, we will cross 100,000 more people. That means more demand on the parks, facilities, and community surveys. Good thing is that we have over 60-plus parks and two swimming pools, four community centers, and two wonderful, nice auditorium. But our challenge is not only maintaining those assets, but as the population increases, adding the new assets, or the new parks. Now, as we see from the plan, that most of the development is focused on the city center because of the walkable city, we have to ensure that not only we have a local park facility, but also other facilities which are already available, walkable. Now, my guiding document or guiding plan will be the master plan, as, commission master plan, which has clearly listed the priorities based on the feedback from the people. And also periodically, we need to take a, a feedback from the people also. For example, survey has been sent for the trails. So with that, considering that, I, while making the decision, I want to ensure
30 seconds.
That it is equitable, any facilities, it is accessible to all the age groups, and everybody gets benefited to it. Otherwise, having this big inventory won't serve anyone. Obviously, money is a challenge, so we need to figure it out, private-public partnership, and also the new builder fees, what they pay for the park's development. We have to rely on that. Thank you.
Very good. You're just right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And over to Councilmember Juwena.
Hi, Vasanth.
Hi.
My question is, what's your approach to evaluating whether a park project or program delivers added value to our community?
You asked process of evaluating?
Correct. So I'll repeat. What's your approach to evaluating whether a park project or program delivers added value to the community?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned earlier, we have over 60 parks. So that is a pretty good number. Now we have ambitious target of 6.5 acres per thousand people as a park space area. So whenever the new demand for the parks come, first thing is to, I will take into consideration whether the nearby walkable within half a mile or 10, 15 minutes, already existing parks are there. If not, obviously, with the new development, the, we have to partner with the builder. Now, in addition to the fees, we need to encourage and work with them to build, maintain, and then transfer the park to us. And when putting the park, I will ensure that I take care of the demography of that area, how many people of what age group, et cetera, will be visiting, so that we can structure, structure that accordingly. And my goal will be, the budget perm is to make all-season park so that people can make use of it throughout the year, including putting lights for the basketball court in the night, et cetera. So basically, my guiding principle will be equitable and sustainable. You know, when you build a park, obviously, we need to sustain it, otherwise the quality will, people won't be able to enjoy it. Hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Rubio.
Thank you. Hello, Vasanth. Good to see you. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
So my question is, what programs can we implement for young and/or single adults in San Ramon who are seeking more social connections and a healthier lifestyle?
That's, if you see the, I visited most of the parks, and I rented and organized the program and almost all of the community centers. So one challenge is, you know, to taking care of everyone, all age group, including the single parents and the young youth, right? So if you see our demography, quarter of our population is in the age group of zero to to eighteen years. That means we have a pretty strong, growing population of the young leaders. So now, we have a basketball court, et cetera. But I don't know how much that is utilized by them. So we need to have, figure it out, the way of, you know, utilization also. And to encourage youths to make more use of these parks, and also having this, you know, uh, the friendly matches or the friendly events or pop-up events where the people can come and enjoy. And that is not only for the single parents. Obviously, generally, people come with the families. But for the single parents also, there should be a facility in the park where they can mingle around. For example, in the dog park, if you put the more shaded area, people can come, almost everyone has a dog, they can come and socialize. Otherwise, if you put a small shade, people may just walk in the neighborhood, right? In this technological world, it is very, very important people socialize, and we should make all the effort to achieve this.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Over to Vice Mayor Veros.
Hi, Vasant.
Yes.
Thanks for applying.
Thank you.
For this position. My question for you, what strategies would you implement to develop sports and community programs that not only serve our local residents, but also attract visitors and promote tourism in our community?
Okay. It's a great question, because we have all these parks we should not only enjoy, but enable others to enjoy too. Just last week, along with some volunteers, I organized the International Day of Yoga in the Memorial Park. Around hundred people showed up. So at the end of the program, when we are having a social hours, that's what I was discussing. Why not to make these events big, so that we invite people from the, out, not only within the city, but outside the city? For example, combine yoga with the music fest day, so that it's a whole-day event, so people can come outside. In addition, on the sports side, this is cultural. And the sports side, now there are different sports. Right now, if you see during the weekend, all the league, uh, local leagues are playing, and people are practicing baseball or cricket, why not to make a minor league competition? Maybe we can come up with Tri-Valley Champion Cup. And if you see, our hotels are empty during the weekend, right? During the week, they are available. If you make this big events like this, competition, et cetera, so people can come outside too. And also, we can have a marathon kind of thing, like on Fourth of July, we have a marathon. Why not to make it a big event, so that people from outside also can come and join? I, myself participated in marathons, and because it starts early, I used to drive and to stay in the hotel. So I think by getting the people from outside, people may think, oh, it's getting crowded. That's not true. It, it ultimately builds our brand value as the young city with a lot of energy, plus it adds the economic value too. Thank you. And pickleball, cricket, and volleyball, these are all the sports we can, in addition to basketball, of course.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. So I've got the last question of the five. It's gone pretty quick here, and then we'll turn it over to you for a closing comment. And I'll start with a statement, then ask the question. So here's the statement. San Ramon has a limited budget and a growing demographic diversity. We especially have a fast-growing senior population. How well do our parks currently respond to the needs of our senior, our mobility-impaired residents? And what can we do reasonably to make improvements, given that there are so many other competing priorities for our limited funding? Be specific and cite specific parks and areas of concern.
Sure. This one is, definitely needs attention from the Parks Commission sooner than later. We have thirteen percent of our population based on the 2020 census, sixty-five-plus years old. Though the median population is forty years, in another fifteen, twenty years, they will also join this pool, and which is almost sixty percent of the people. Currently, if you go in the evening or weekend, you see the young people, not that many seniors. Senior people, I have seen, they are walking in the neighborhood. Specifically, I would, uh, come with the feasibility, where in the park can we have the loop of walking, like, you know, the paved area? Because the seniors cannot go all the way till the track or, um, that track near the Wanta video. In addition, can we also some nice exercise equipment for them, in the nature exercise equipment? And also, as I said earlier, like pop-up program, like Tai Chi, yoga, or something, so that, you know, they're all motivated? Because encouraging them to come to park, not only it's a good utilization of the park, it will also benefit them in their mental health. And one day, we all going to grow old. So sooner than, sooner we plan for that, it's better.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, that's the end of the question. So we'll turn it back over to you. And if you've got anything that perhaps, or we only had limited questions, so we probably didn't cover everything that you wanted to kind of get off your chest. So if you've got something else you want to say, you got two minutes.
Sure. I had a lot of ideas listed, but two minutes may not be enough. So I will just right away jump to the closing statement. I really liked our, um, the master plan, what we have from the park. It's very nicely set out till 2035, and then continued survey, feedback. Of course, we need to do much more than that to get the feedback. I believe that we are truly at the crossroads at here in San Ramon. Because next ten to fifteen years, it will be, it should be very important that we pay close attention and do our planning long-term wise, because houses are going to increase, and they are already increasing rapidly. We have, as I said, we are, population will go hundred thousand plus. So with that, all this demand comes. Now, when this demand comes, we need to ensure that it's sustainable, equi, equity, equity for everyone, so that all age group come. But it's the two challenges we have. Not only adding new inventory, how will you maintain the existing inventory? Because buying anything is easy, not that difficult. But maintaining is difficult, and there is the continuous pressure on the budget. The measure and takes care to some extent, but that's not going to pay us for the long time. And with that, we need a leaders who are passionate about, genuinely passionate.
Thirty seconds.
Sorry.
Thirty seconds.
Passionate about this subject, who are thoughtful, good listener, and lived here for a while, and going to live here for a while, though we cannot predict. I have seen the complete growth of my children's here, and I myself enjoy it. So I believe it is my duty, when I have extra time, to give this time back. And with my education qualification, with my civic lessons, civic programs, what I attended, and my graduate-level community reach-out, and my experience with nonprofit, et cetera, I think I'm well-suited to take on this challenge. And it will be my greatest honor if I get elected and get chance to serve on this commission.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. So again, we thank you for applying. We thank you for all that you've done thus far in terms of your interest in serving our community, things you've done to actually serve our community. We've got many interviews this evening. We will make a decision tonight.
Tonight, okay.
But again, just on behalf of the entire council, thank you for coming in and showing an interest in this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the wonderful job, the city council. I know you are sitting at the difficult tables, you know? So, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right. Good night. All right. Good evening, Carol. Have a seat.
Good evening. I will. Thank you.
Well, thank you for, for coming in this evening, and thanks for reapplying for the Parks and Community Services Commission position. It's great that, uh, to see you again. What, this is how it's going to work tonight. We've got about twenty minutes for the total time of the interview, so it's not a long time. We're going to start off, give you the opportunity for a two-minute, up to two-minute opening. Then each council member has just one question. And it'll go with, it'll be twenty, two, two minutes per question. And then at the very end, we'll give you the chance to make a closing statement for another two minutes. So it'll go in, the questions will go in the order of Councilmember Adler, Councilmembers Zuenet, Councilmember Rubio, Vice Mayor Veros, and then myself. And that's basically it. Feel free to, you know, ask for clarifying information on a question, write things down, ask us to repeat a question if you need that. And we'll, we'll kind of start the timer, if you will, after any of that clarification. So, and we will be having a timer. We'll, we'll time it for two minutes, and we'll give you a thirty-second warning when you get close.
I'm used to that.
All right. With that, let's go ahead, and, and you can give us your opening. And please, go ahead.
Well, I've, I've been an active commissioner on the park services for some time, and I believe that I've been involved in all aspects of the activities of the commission and the city. So I think my background experience, I believe, is an asset to the commission. And as I retire, I can continually to be available to represent the commission and the city, and be effective as a representative for the city and the commission. So I think I'm known in the city as a leader, and work with the commission and the city staff and others. And my goal is, is always to be respectful and lead and participate where needed.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Well, we're going to start with Councilmember Adler. Your first question, please.
Yes.
Welcome, Carol. Good to see you.
Thank you.
My question for you is, and after I read it, I'll give you two minutes. Recently, the city of San Ramon has had to manage budget challenges with more limited financial resources. Given the number of parks our city currently has, how would you balance between investing in current park infrastructure and adding more parks? And you start now.
Yes. I think we've always had a real good program that we have. Of course, now, many of our parks that we've started are now getting older naturally, and they need more maintenance and attention. And I believe that they had every park in order as to when they should be updated and whatever. But of course, there's always those things that happen in a park that, that's not going to be just normal. There's going to be, you know, whatever, there could be, you know, floods, or there could be vandalism or whatever that needs to be taken care of. But I think that our city has it balanced enough that we can give great attention to all of our parks. And I think we have to be very careful about adding new parks, because I know we have, we have the Henry Ranch that doesn't have any park, or we've not done anything with that. And we've on the Bolinger Canyon, there's, there's, there is another area that you can have a park. I know that parks don't cost, you know, nothing, but when you have a bathroom to pet, it costs a hundred thousand dollars, then you think, well, where do we go from here? So I think we have the staff on board that really looks into that. And I think the parks really take an overview of how we treat our parks, and are known for our parks throughout the.
Thirty seconds?
So I, I think that we have to be careful and, and really look at things specifically. But I do think that we have enough talent on our staff that takes that seriously, and that we'll be able to, to maintain our parks in a, in a viable way.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Over to Councilmember Zuenet. Your question, please.
Hi, Carol. Good evening.
Good evening.
So my question is, what's your approach to evaluating whether a park project or program delivers added value to our community?
I think you have to know where it is, what the community surrounding that area that you want to develop is about. And to, is it an area that maybe needs parks aimed at smaller children, or maybe it's the youth? I think you have to take all those things into consideration. And you just can't come up with whatever. But I think we have tried in the past to be sure that parks, we have parks that are for small children. We've had parks for, to include for teenagers, adults, taking into consideration seniors. And also, maybe that we need a different kind of park, and if whatever that we don't have. So I think we have to take all aspects of it, what, where it is, what we do, how much money we have. Those aspects, I think we have to cover all of it, not just one thing.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Councilmember Rubio.
Thank you. Hi, Carol. Thank you for joining us tonight. My question is, what programs can we implement for young and/or single adults in San Ramon who are seeking a more social, are seeking more social connections and a healthier lifestyle?
I think the parks that we have, you know, have, have areas where you can have small children, you can have parents with small children that they can watch, but yet that they can be on some benches or nearby, that can socialize with each other. I think Bishop Ranch is developing areas of where they're using the areas close by to bring people into their community downtown area, that there's socialization there. There is, we are kind of divided, the city, and you, we do have to work, I think, on social areas immediately, because we have many people of coming in from different areas, and we need to be sure that we include everyone in our parks and social areas. So we have to be consistent and, and take into consideration our population that's coming in, and where they can shop, where they can go to parks, or where they can have restaurants that they can sit at and enjoy friends, you know, enjoy conversation with their friends and socialization. But we, we do have to, I think, work on that area, because we're growing so quickly.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Veros.
Hi, Carol. Thank you very much for all your services as commissioner. And thanks for reapplying for this position. My question for you, what strategies would you implement to develop sports and community programs that not only serve our local residents, but also attract visitors and promote tourism in our community?
We have, we have a lot of sports. I think we need to look at to expanding and exploring that we can have programs and maybe you can have special events for soccer, or cricket, or basketball, whatever, that we need to be sure that we advertise more, that we have the facilities to accommodate these things, these sports events, and that, that we take that in consideration. Not only we have the parks and the facilities to accommodate that, but we also then have the facilities in our community that they can stay in, also have places to eat and rest and be, be active. I mean, I've had a daughter and granddaughters active very much in sports. So I mean, I've gone and sat on bleachers for a long time, and, and you get to know people there. It's, it's a social way of, of it, knowing other people and being active, and know that you have something in common with people. But I think that we have to be on the lookout for what is, that we need to keep our eyes open for events. And I think we've done that with the Cricket Association, that, that many of us didn't know anything about, and now have become, you know, interested in that, and know what's going on, and, and support that. So I think I support all the activities that we can have. I think we have the facilities to do so.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Carol, that, I'm down to the last question here, so that went pretty quick.
Okay.
And I'll kinda start off with a quick statement and then, then ask my question. So here's my statement. San Ramon has a limited budget and a growing demographic diversity. We especially have a fast-growing senior population. How well do our parks currently respond to the needs, needs of our senior or mobility-impaired residents? And what can we reasonably do to make improvements, given that there's so many other competing priorities for our limited funding? Be specific and cite specific parks and areas of concern if you can.
Well, I guess I'd classify myself as a senior, so I qualify for that. I, we can, my husband and I can go walk to, well, we have one close, two close by. We can walk there and usually do a lot of walking and just knowing that it's a lot of school parks. Park for seniors, well, I think the one across that is going to be built near the retirement center, planning a red house, I guess I will say, that it was a little bit controversial. But that area I can see in myself, as I have small little grandchildren, that you can't keep them in a house or situated very long because they don't walk, they jump and whatever. And so I'm one of these grandmas that like to keep up. So, and senior facilities, I think it has to have, you know, some rest places, benches for that. We usually like to walk, you like to be able to chat with other people in a park. So I think it should be shade structure, very important, places that you could sit and maybe play cards or something with somebody else if you have some avenues of that area. Flowers are always wonderful to walk and be around, that they have plenty of flowers or things that are aesthetic to not only seniors, but to most people. And still be able to have maybe your family there with a picnic and have family events there. So all those things, I think, maybe you take into. There might be some parks, we have one park I know especially for little children and, and you take them there and it's nice to sit sometimes and just watch them and see if you can play with them. You don't maybe move as fast as they do, as you used to, but you still have to entertain them and be with them and they appreciate that because it's really nice when they get loved and say that you're the best grandma or whatever. And so I think, I think you just have to realize that you want to have areas of walking that especially, places to sit down and rest, places that you can visit with other people. I know my husband and I just went to Fayola Gardens there to enjoy the beautiful flowers, but they have benches all around that you can sit, they have a pool that you can sit around and walk, you know, and visit and relax. You don't always have to be on the go, but still you can be with other, with, with your family and enjoy them all together.
Okay.
So I think it has to be, you have to have a combination of everything.
All right. Very good. Thank you so much. All right. Well, that's the end of the specific questions that we had. Our questions only kinda covered certain areas of, that we were of concern for us or things that were on our mind. But there may be more that's on your mind that you want to express to us and this is your opportunity now. Take another couple of minutes and close us out.
Okay. Well, like I said, I've traveled throughout the state and, and, you know, spoke with people about our good parks and want to keep them area because I have been seated where my grandchildren are playing and it's really sad to see that some of the, this places that they have to see, that they have to play on. So I'm glad that we take care of our parks. And I'm glad now that we're working on updating and completing our Crow Canyon Gardens. That's always been a, a big, one of my events because my granddaughters loved, we loved to go down there to greek and play around when they were younger. So I'm anxious to see that that's completed before I retire, or I mean, you know, leave. I think I've had, I've been elected Citizen of the Year by the Chamber. I've had, been elected as, working with the city of San Ramon and for their park commission. And then also I was elected as State Representative that, that I have always given to my community. And I enjoy that, that I like to give of myself to make a better place than for our city that you live and play in because I think that's very important. I've also been active in the San Ramon Historic Foundation. When that, that started, I helped them organize in Gotham 501(c)(3), have done very many fundraisers that have been very successful.
30 seconds.
And so I just think that I've, I've given to the community and I continually want to give back to the community because I like to be active and I think I enjoy working on the city and giving back to the city. So I would, been, hopefully been successful and done everything that I've tried to do and be positive and whatever. And so I think my experience in more many programs and everything give my experience to be a good person, to be on the commission.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Thanks so much for, for coming in this evening. Thank you for reapplying for this position. And we also just all, on behalf of the council, we will thank you for your service on the commission thus far. So we have many interviews, as you know, this evening and we'll make a decision.
Okay.
And the word will get out to you.
I want to thank you very much for interviewing me and I hope to continue.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Okay.
I want to bring something to the attention, Joan. Check the email from one of the next interviewee.
I did not get the email. I'm gonna have Bill looking into it.
Oh.
Because for some reason, he hasn't got a whole staff. He is waiting outside. He would like to speak directly to the council and reference to that.
Okay.
I believe he will be selected and will be with our application.
Okay.
So I will go ahead and look into it.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see the email. What was that? Okay.
Yeah. Oh, they, they, it's, check your email. They just.
That's, that was.
Yeah, that would be.
So we'll have you, so if you don't want to get camera at all, is that correct? Just make sure that, Bill, can we only have the camera on the council for just one moment? So you're welcome to just address. That is up to the discretion of the council.
Yeah. Because I'll give a little bit background. I work in a financial industry, banking and financial industry. So if there are some things that conflict with the bank or the financial industry, that has a real big impact. So I work for Limo Bank of the West, which is based in San Ramon. I also have my own business, which is based in San Ramon. And what happens is there are certain members of ours, as a community service, we provide, which is called CRA, Community Reinvestment Act. All the banks and financial institutions and their executives have to work as volunteers. We provide our service to the community with zero dollars. Even if I get $1 back, I'll be in conflict with my contract. So I cannot expect anything and it is, it will only be a service as conflict towards the bank.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I appreciate that and maybe I'll confer with my other council members, but we have made this a public meeting. And as you know, with all of our public meetings, they're, they're open to the public, for the public to review. And we have recorded the other candidates and, and I guess in fairness to them, you know, trying to provide equal constraints, equal opportunities and things like that. I would say we really have to do the, the same process for everybody. That's my position. I don't have a seat, by the way, because.
No, no worries.
Okay.
It's fine. I sit down all day.
Okay. But that's, that's where, that's where your microphone is too, by the way.
Oh.
Yeah. I, I guess my, my position is, given what you said, to me, I would proceed with the, what we've done thus far, but I, I'm open to hear what my other council members have to say. And I don't think we have the opportunity to have our city attorney available for consultation on this issue, but.
No, but through the mayor, he has also applied for a planning commission.
Yes.
And I heard mention of not being able to take funds and both of these positions do have a stipend associated with them.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How much would that be?
I forget if it was 100 or 2, 200 a month or?
150 per month.
150?
Yeah.
So if, there is a, there are few limits that can be considered. So if you go to, say for example, if I go to San Francisco and we're boys and girl scouts, so that would include for all the work and the time away and the gas, they can exempt me up to 250 dollars. So there are some exceptions, but we'll, we'll cross the board and I'll also, I'll work with my bank once I get approved or if the position goes through, then I'll sit on with my HR and also come back to you guys.
Yeah.
I don't want to be preemptive ahead of time.
Yeah. And I, I can't speak to, as to whether or not you can decline the, the stipend or not. That, that might be something the city could consider. But I think for the time being, we have to kinda look at this interview process this evening and make a decision on that. So again, any council member have any thoughts on this? Otherwise, I'd, I'd, my perspective is it's gonna be recorded. Have a seat. Let's do the interview and hopefully we, you won't cross any red lines in your profession. But otherwise, I, anyone have anything to say?
Do you want to go? Go ahead.
One question I have. Is one of the candidate applicant, Paul, did it drop because we are doing recording?
That is one of the reasons. The other is just the public spotlight not realizing the whole part of, you know, your, your life being open, open book.
Yeah.
I don't mind being on the public forum. That, that's already, so because I have worked with other banks, at JP Morgan Chase, I was Chester County Planning Commission Member for approximately four years. That's fine. And we did get during small stipends, but any transportation offerings that.
Yeah. That, just one other thing to consider is that we, we do have candidates that are not available for an interview tonight and we are gonna consider them by application only. So another option might be for you not to go through the recorded process, but we consider your application only.
I'm here. I don't mind, please do not recall. I don't mind talking to you guys. I've taken 30 minutes and you guys make this admission.
I, I think the concern is about being equitable to all the candidates and consistent across the board. So if we do that for you last minute when we've already put forward a process where via.
It's not informed at all, the application or anything like that.
And I think, and I think if, I think the other thing that concerns me is that if you're concerned about being recorded and people hearing what you're saying, all of our questions pertain.
The interview process.
But the inter, if I may finish one minute, all the questions pertain to things you will be discussing on the Parks and Community Services Commission, which will be recorded.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I don't, I guess I'm struggling to understand how the two are different.
Yeah. Probably you're a business owner, not an employee. You go to an interview and they don't broadcast it.
This is a public space, though.
That, yes, absolutely.
And if you are on the Parks and Community Service Commission, that will also be recorded. Everything you say there. So the questions that we're asking you are the same very topics you will be discussing during those meetings that will be publicly made available?
Absolutely. Once I'm under position or once we get through the process, I'll get the clearance from the HR because this is like, I'm stepping ahead of something, which I'm not, I'm not sure even if I, if you guys are comfortable, please go.
Yeah. Sorry. It's, the thing is, we need to follow the process. If one candidate dropped because they want, don't want to be on recording, then that will become a problem for us.
Okay.
So, yeah.
It's your decision. I, I, I just personally, I don't want to be recorded for interview only. Once the position has been confirmed, I'll get the HR clearance and I don't mind.
We can consider your application like we will for the other candidate because that's equitable across the board. And, you know, we're being consistent with everybody.
But during the application process, just so you know, there was no mention of being public.
We, we've always recorded it, whether it's audio or video.
All these interviews are public?
I have not seen online anywhere. I went to a website and I browsed through YouTube.
You, you can always request if you have any specific interviews, that if you are not able to find it, always feel free to reach out to our staff. They can provide you the recordings.
Okay. So.
You being here, though. Please know that.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing and what I, I feel in my heart is, from a, a perspective of being fair to all the applicants, we're gonna ask you to proceed with a recorded interview or if you, if you choose not to do that, then we'll consider your application by the paper only and we'll leave the decision up to you.
Yes, I'll look at it because without getting, I, I can't step ahead of my career.
We completely understand and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Tomorrow I will be there as well. Yes.
Okay. So same goes for tomorrow?
Pardon?
Same, same goes for tomorrow?
Same goes.
Application only?
At 5:20.
Okay. Well, let me, let me just say before you go, since you're, you're here, we, thank you for applying.
Yeah.
We appreciate your interest and your interest in serving the community and for applying to be a commissioner. It's a very important position. We take it seriously and I know you took it seriously.
Guys are here spending all your free time. So I, I understand. Just that without getting any confirmation, I cannot reach out to my HR and say, because it's a corporate world, you know, they'll ask, hey, you apply. If you apply for a job, doesn't mean that you are moving to that place.
Yeah. I, I would, I would just offer this, that this isn't a job that would, in our estimation, would require you to forfeit your current job. This is, this is kinda on your free time, if you will, and that's why it's a stipend. It's not a, it's not employment with the city.
Yes. And I greatly appreciate that and I'm fine with that. That is the reason I agree. There were some stipulated lines saying that it will be recorded, all the meetings will be recorded, and I was fine with signings and everything, but nowhere in the application it said the interview will be broadcast. So this was a surprise when I received the email from you. So I said, just not the interview. Until I get the position, I cannot go to the HR. So it's like a chicken and egg thing. Until I get the position, I cannot go to the HR and say, hey, I, I'm working, I'm going to volunteer with the city. Can you give me your clearance? And they would say, yes, now you are considered CRA, Community Reinvestment Act, which is a program that, for all the banks and executives, they have to share some of their time with their local communities. And that's the reason you're seeing us for almost like 20, 14 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks again for your interest. We will consider your application in our deliberations.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're slightly ahead of schedule. Ready to take a break?
The break is next after this.
Take it.
Okay. So you're gonna pause the communication?
We'll pause the communication and we'll be back here for our next applicant by 7:20.
Okay. We'll re- We'll reconvene at that time. Thanks.
All right, we're going to reconvene now after a break. And our next candidate will be Partha Meadra. And Joan is out getting Partha at this time. All right, good evening. Partha, have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Thanks for applying for, kind of a reapplying for this position as a Parks and Community Services Commissioner. This is kind of the way it's going to work this evening. It's about a total of 20 minutes elapsed time. This session is being recorded. And you will have two minutes to give an opening statement. Now, we're going to go through, each council member will have one question. And you'll have two minutes to answer our questions. And then you'll have the opportunity at the end for a closing statement. So the, we are timing the responses and the statements. And we'll give you a 30-second heads up if you're getting close to the two minutes. You don't have to use the whole two minutes. But we'll let you know if you're getting close to that.
Sure.
And then when that two minutes is up, we'll move on to the next question. And I think with that, we will go ahead and get going. The order will be, the first question will be Councilmember Adler, followed by Councilmember Juwainat, Councilmember Rubio, Vice Mayor Verros, and then myself.
Okay.
Okay, so we're ready to go. So if you'd like, and by the way, when we do get into the questions, if you want us to repeat the question, we're happy to do that or add clarification. We won't start the timer until you're set to go into your answer. But feel free to ask for clarification also. All right, first question will, or opening statement, rather, we'll turn it over to you. You've got two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Armstrong, Vice Mayor Verros, Councilmember Adler, Rubio, and Juwainat, really appreciate their time for you. So I have been serving the Parks Commission for the last four years. And last year, I have been the chair of this commission for that. So I, we have done a lot of, not only passed through a lot of commission and commission business, but also we have opened a new Sunrise Ridge Park, as well as the cricket pitch at Quail Run. We also install, opened the new art installation at our library. So that is during our tenure. This has been a great honor and privilege for me to serve the community and the, and the city of San Ramon. This, this has been a rewarding experience for me, not only for this, but it is, as I said, lots of, for the last four years, we have passed through a lot of proposals, parks proposals, and there's a parks that, different kind of parks, privately owned public parks, city parks, and different, so there are a lot of rewarding experiences for me as well. It's also, I have also chaired the, the joint committee, committee for, with the Historic Foundation for the MUD building restoration projects as well. So that was, that was also, so this is last four years, I have been used my time and effort to serve the community, serve the, serve this city as well. On the, on the side, I also have--
30 seconds.
I also have served in the Art Advisory Committee, as well as the Library Advisory Committee. We also initiated a new nonprofit organization that does lot of, a lot of community services, as well as philanthropy work. With that, I rest my here for my opening statement. And thank you again for giving me the opportunity to come and talk to you guys today.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Partha. So at this time, we'll start the questions. Again, one, one question per council member. We'll start with Councilmember Adler.
Yeah, thanks for being here, Partha. I'm going to read my question and then start the timer. Recently, the city of San Ramon has had, has had to manage budget challenges with more limited financial resources. Given the number of parks our city currently has, how would you balance between investing in current park infrastructure and adding more parks? Start now.
That's a great question, Councilmember Adler. With, first of all, yeah, city has been going through its financial situation, just like every other city. And, and it is a great, great initiative to have the measure in to support city on that. So that's definitely one part of it that helped the city on that. Coming back to the part, a park system, I think there should be a balance on that. Now, we definitely try to reach, achieve our master plan goal, which is a six acre of park per thousand people. So that is one thing we should definitely strive that. We have 58 parks and lot of trails, which is a great community we have built over here. But at the same time, I think we also need to be a balance. So one of the, one of the, our driving principle of our master plan is the last is balance between quality and quantity. So quantity is important. So six acre per, per thousand people is definitely important. But at the same time, maintaining the parks to the quality, maintaining the balance of life into that city is also important. So I think over, end of the, end of the day, we need to have new parks. But at the same time, maintaining the parks, what we have is also very important. So balancing is important for all of us, maintaining the quality of life that we have built, so, so putting so much effort is absolutely important to us. So definitely balancing those two is absolutely important. And I will do my every effort to help the city and community to do that.
Is that it? You have 30 seconds if you need it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think, I think that's it. But again, coming back to that, I think I always go back to the master plan for my guidance. And, and there are enough ample opportunities there to look into different guidance through that, like already there is connectivity, interoperability, and all those things there, including the balance, the one that I mentioned. Balancing the quality and quantity is also important. So I always for, whenever this kind of situation comes in, I always go back to my, to the master plan to get my guidance from there.
All right. Thank you, Partha. We'll go to the next question to Councilmember Juwainat.
Hi, Partha, good evening.
Thank you.
My question is, what's your approach to evaluating whether a park, project, or program delivers added value to our community?
So that's, again, that's a very good question. Like, we can offer a lot of programs, a lot of parks on that. But it is also very important, as our community members and leaders, it is our important, important duties to make sure they serve their purposes. And they serve their purposes to the people who we built it for. So a park, whether a program, whether this is serving, one of the, one of the definitely, the direction is participations. Are we getting enough participations? And also, at the same time, are, when we get the participation, are we getting the right demography of the things? Are we, and another one, master plan is inclusive in it. So our, our program should try to include all the diverse population that we have. They can, again, another one coming back to the, our master plan, that. So different metrics that city parks department creates, that's also helps us to, to make sure that we are achieving, what we are trying to, try to achieve. At the same time, I, is it, what is the 50%? There's another one thing is that we try to recover 50% of the cost of the program. That is another one guidance for the Parks, Parks Department. So that is another one there. Are we getting that? And if we have enough participation, we will probably get that one. So serving the community, serving the right populations, serving the right community, demography, as well as trying to recover the target 50% of that. So that is definitely on that. On top of that, we, I wanted to see, I want, thank you, I wanted to see if we can achieve the, we, year over year, the increase of popularity and effectiveness of the program. So that way, we, I'll try to evaluate the program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Over to Councilmember Rubio.
Hello, Partha. Thank you for joining us tonight. My question is, what programs can we implement for-- My question is, what programs can we implement for young and/or single adults in San Ramon who are seeking more social connections and a healthier lifestyle?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, with all the community we are building here, and we expect a lot of new, young, not only single, but also young couples coming here. So I think, I think, rather than calling it single, I would say young couple, and young people, what we can provide them for. So, and also, we, not with the master plan, we build a walking district. So the, another one reason we built it, because we want people to walk. And younger people absolutely want to prefer that. So younger people in that. So our downtown area that we are building is definitely serving that. Coming back to what are the, what are the, I think, if we think it through, there will be the three things that we can provide, or we can think about to provide the services to them. So are we providing them enough social connectivity? Are we giving them? Now, young people, when we were young, we wanted to have some sort of social life, activity opportunities on that. So our city center, our walking district, our new orchard housing complex, where we have retail space and all those things coming up, some sort of nightlife, not nightlife, is by opportunity to leisure, having leisure activities. So that's, definitely, we need to do that. Young people definitely are more attracted to cultural, social, as well as sports activities. So what are we building for that? So we definitely have a lot of parks, we are providing a lot of services. That's mainly for the young people, young kids, kids on that. So what we can provide for the young adults on that? Sort of kind of competitions, what kind of other things on that? We started, recently started the cricket tournaments here. So that is another one thing we can, we can provide. Cultural program like something like Agomoni, and Agomoni, and we provide a lot of other events that we, that we provide cultural opportunities on that. There is a new stadium, Bishop Ranch is building-
Sorry, I forgot to give you a 30 seconds notice, sorry.
Bishop Ranch is building a 3,500 open auditorium there. So that will be another attraction for that. So those kind of things that we provide, I think we can attract more young people, definitely, to the San Ramon.
And thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Over to Vice Mayor Veros.
Hi, Partha. Thank you for serving our community as a commissioner, and thanks for applying, reapplying for the position. My question for you, what strategies would you implement to develop sports and community programs that not only serve our local residents, but also attract visitors and promote tourism in our community?
Right, I think that's another one great question. So San Ramon, we have a great community for building, for building our community, and also growing our kids. Great school, great community, everything. But I think at the same time with parks, we have a lot of opportunities to build this program, sports and cultural programs on that. We already have it. Now, coming back, so let's start with cultural. We have different events, cultural events that are going on throughout, throughout the year. We have Agomoni Hour events, we have summer concerts, we have different, like Indian classical and international classical programs going on. So that, with that, I think we need to have a comprehensive program about how can we build San Ramon as an attraction, as a thing, as a cultural venue for the Bay Area. So that is one thing. Sports, even coming to the sports, I, we, we, we just, I just heard there is, and I was part of opening the new cricket pitch, that. So there is some opportunity there to build, build San Ramon as a cricketing, cricketing venue for the whole Bay Area. Now, we had, we just, I just went to Oakland to see the Major League Cricket Tournament, right? And I think some of you were there as well. It was a great event, great, great event. My kids had loved that. So maybe there is an opportunity that we know that there is a new minor league cricket team is coming to San Ramon. San Ramon Grizzly, they're coming, and they're very interested to build that, not only just a couple of games, they wanted to build it over there. So there is a great opportunity to build that, build on top of that. So that will also not only have a new cricketing or-
30 seconds.
Cricketing or sports event, but also building something new, and building something cricket venue for this one. So on the cultural side, on the sports side, and pickable, pickable tournaments, badminton tournaments. All those tournaments, we can, we have it, but I think we can focus more on building that and building San Ramon as a kind of sports and cultural venue for the whole Bay Area. I think that one part is probably missing. In the East Bay, we definitely can build that. And we, I will put my effort to build that in future as well, working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Partha, so that's four out of five questions. We're moving right along here, so-
Right.
Your last question from me, I'll, I'll start with a statement, then I'll ask the question, and then give you your two minutes. So here's my statement. San Ramon has a limited budget and growing demographic diversity. We especially have a fast-growing senior population. So here's the question. How well do our parks currently respond to the needs of our senior or mobility-impaired residents? And what can we reasonably do to make improvements there, given that there's so many other competing priorities to our limited funding? Be specific and cite specific parks or areas of concern, if you can.
Right, yes, so there are two growing diverse population in, in San Ramon is definitely population diversity, and as well as aging populations. We know that. We are looking at the schools and following enrollments, and we know that there's a population enrollment. So we definitely need to take this as a very serious measure, that we have 58 parks, and how can we use that as something that can serve our senior population with their needs on that? Now, we, again, the master plan had several options on that, shading, seating, benches, and different other option, there are, there are provisions there, the request to that. So we'll definitely push for those kind of, those kind of options to use the funding for them. We do have senior centers, where we have community gardens, where we know that seniors are very, very interested, and very, it's very difficult to even find a space there right now. So there's a big waiting list. So that's, that's something we can do that. We have Crow Canyon Garden there, similar kind of concept, we use that. We can make more country connections there. So we do use senior citizens to avail those connections and go to different parks, different that. We can also use the different parks to have different programs that can serving the senior populations. So, yes, so this is, this is a growing challenge that we have, that we have beautiful parks, but how can we manage those and serve the senior community more? And, and this is something, we, we have to think more about it, and serve more about it, identify more things that we can offer for the senior community members. And there, again, we, knowing that when we have the senior population, there is an opportunity that the family members will come and meet them. So we have senior centers coming up across, across the street. So, and so when we build a new parks there, keeping in mind that there will be senior members, senior members living there who will be using those parks. At the same time, we have our, their young kids, like grandsons, grandparents, granddaughters coming to visit them, so serving them as well, because senior members will prefer to go to a park where they, where they have the opportunities to play with their grandkids on that. So, so definitely, there are a lot of opportunities that we can work on that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. So that's, that's it for the formal questions that we have for you. Our questions only, kind of, we're driving towards certain topic areas. And there may be more that you want to say or, or convey to us to make us understand why you're a good candidate for this position. So I'll give you another two minutes at this time, and you can close us out.
Absolutely. On the closing, I would like to say this is my honor and privilege to serve this community and city for over almost 10 years right now. Out of the 10 years, I have been served in the Library Advisory Committee for two years, Art Advisory Committee for two years, and four years for, as a Parks Commissioner. So it is, I, these, these positions, I feel that it's a responsibility that I take on myself to serve the community, because I'm so vested to this community. My kids grew up in this community. So I feel that I'm very vested, vested in this community, and I want to serve, keep growing, serving this community going forward. At the same time, not only I worked, associated with the city, I'm also associated with, build a new nonprofit organization. I was just founding members. That organization started with only three members. Right now, it's almost 700 members. And that, we organized the biggest event in that. So I'm, again, another one way to serve this, serve this community, that. So the one thing, I also have been very actively participating in all the city events that offered me to participate, like run San Ramon, Art and Wind Festival, summer concert. I have a volunteer in every opportunity that I got as a commission, commissioner, as an Art Advisory Committee member, so I've been commissioned that. So with that, I feel I am very vested, and I will be really, really honored if we get an opportunity to continue as a commission going forward for the next four, four years term.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you very much. So that's, that's it for the interviews, for the statements and everything. So again, just on behalf of the City Council, thank you again for your time in serving on the various committees on the commission thus far, and for reapplying for the Parks Commission position. So we will make a decision tonight. We have a few more interviews to do. But again, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening. Okay, next up is Robert Pickle. Hi, Robert. Yeah, have a seat, please. Good evening. Thanks for joining us today. Thank you for applying for this position, and just your interest in, in serving our community again. And let me tell you how it's going to work this evening. It's, we'll start off with allowing you the opportunity to do a two-minute opening statement. Each council member will then have one question, and you'll give you, give you two minutes for each of those responses to those questions. And then we'll give you a chance at the end to do a closing statement for two minutes. So we are recording this. We, we'll have a timer, just to try and stay on, on time. We'll give you a 30-second warning if you start getting towards the end of that two-minute period. The order of questioning will be, we'll start off with Councilmember Adler, and we'll move over to Councilmembers Juwainat, then Councilmember Rubio, Vice Mayor Veros, and then myself. I will have the final question. So at this time, we will go ahead and give you the opportunity to tell us a little bit about yourself, or, you know, take, take the time you need to give an opening statement, whatever you want.
So, you know, I've always been involved with, you know, sports in particular, lifetime competitive athlete. And, you know, my dad left my mom when we were, I don't know, in our early teens, in my formative years. And, and, you know, sports and recreation, and being outdoors, and all those kind of things, kind of, you know, helped me develop self-esteem, and learn the importance of teamwork, and, you know, play football and basketball, and so on and so forth. And, you know, I always looked up to the coaches that I had that were real mentors, you know, maybe even more so than for other kids who had a father. And I think those were kind of the seeds that were placed many years ago. And, you know, kind of coming full circle now, I do feel kind of an obligation to give back, you know, all the things that I've received in my life. And I think I have the time now, and, you know, I have experience and the skills. And I got involved, gosh, three years ago, did Leadership Ceremony, and then followed up with Government 101, and Planning 101, and then the Citizens Police Academy, whatever it's called. And, and at every step, I met the most incredible people that I was exposed to from the city, be it in leadership, or the police department, or the fire department, or the city staff, or... And they all were trying to make this a better place for those that live here. And, and it was infectious. And I kind of got the fever. And I think it brought, you know, those seeds kind of full circle. And so I would like to leave this place a better place than when I came. And the city's phenomenal, you know, you know, I don't even know if there's room for improvement, because you guys and the staff and everybody did such a great job. And, you know, the, the amount of community services, and sports, and recrea, it's, I was going through today. It's overwhelming, actually. So, you know, I'll tell you a quick story, and then I'll finish up. You know, I whitewater raft once in a while. Guided whitewater rafting. And if you've ever been on the American River, when you finish rafting, usually you have six or eight people on the raft. And you finish in Folsom Lake, and you come up along the sand, and then everybody gets out, and you take your oars, and you throw them out of the thing, and then you pull up the raft, and you tip it over. And then everybody, you know, gets placed along the raft, around the side, and you lift it up, and you have to carry it up this hill that's about 200 yards. And, you know, by the time you're halfway, you know, you're like this, and like, you know. And kind of, that's kind of how I see myself. I don't think I'm better than anyone else, but I'm willing to pitch in and do my part. And I think I've demonstrated that in the last year in particular, to do what's right by the city.
Thank you. All right, I appreciate that. And we will now move on to our first question with Councilmember Adler.
Good to see you here, Robert.
You too.
I'm going to read my question, then give you your two, two minutes. Recently, the city of San Ramon has had to manage budget challenges with more limited financial resources. Now, given the number of parks our city currently has, how would you balance between investing in current park infrastructure and adding more parks?
What do we have, like 63 or 64, something like that? You know, the city does face challenges that, you know, are in some part, kind of out of their control, in the sense that inflation's going up, and, you know, insurance is going up, and outside contracting, and so on and so forth, and it's going up faster than revenues have. So I think, you know, mapping out a sustainable future is going to be key for the next 10 years, because I'm not going to run the measure in next time. And I think, and on the other hand, you have, what, maybe over 20,000 people that are going to be moving in here in the next 10 or 15 years, when orchards and, and the rest of sunsets built out. So I wouldn't necessarily be in a hurry to increase the number of parks. I mean, to the extent that there are needs, like cricket, for example, or there's parts of the community that are not being served, I think we should look at, you know, building out additional capabilities. I mean, look at badminton now, it's, you know, I think it was, takes up over half of the number of entrance in open gym. So there are definitely some newer recreation and activities that we need to look at. But I would do everything in my power not to close any of the parks, because I think that, you know, the activities and, and sports and community things are the kind of the glue that keep us together and-
30 seconds.
-bonded to each other. And so, I don't know if I answered your question, but thank you.
You've got 23 seconds, if you have, want to have anything?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move over to Councilmembers Juwainat.
Hey, Robert, good evening. So my question is, what's your approach to evaluating whether a park project or program delivers added value to our community?
That's an interesting question, because I was looking at the results of the Art and Wind Festival, and kind of the, you know, the grocery receipts, and, you know, the costs, and, you know, I think it is profitable until you factor in the internal staff, time and requirements, and it's probably a wash. I mean, you know, if you look at many of the things that we do from a, strictly from an ROI standpoint, they probably don't pencil. A few do. So obviously, we'd want to try to, or I would want to try to, you know, generate as much revenue as we can, and still, you know, provide the services. You know, it just, it's tough, because I don't, as I said, I don't think that many of our activities on their own are going to pay for themselves. So I think we need to, you know, look at the community at large, and see who is being served appropriately, and, and where people aren't. Maybe we need to invest in some, you know, parks for, or park facilities for youth, or seniors, or, you know, so on and so forth, or some of the new people that have joined the community. community. But to answer your question, Robert, I think that's a, that's, it's kind of a judgment decision. I don't think it's, I think if we were to look at most new projects from just ROI standpoint, that they probably don't pencil.
30 seconds. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council member Rubio.
Thank you. And Robert, thank you for joining us tonight. My question is, what programs can we implement for young and/or single adults in San Ramon who are seeking more social connections and a healthier lifestyle?
That's a good question. You know, after looking at the minutes and the agenda for the last couple of months and some of the things that are kinda on the docket, I do think that, you know, it is extremely important that we look, you know, at every opportunity to increase programs for kids and teens. You know, the last three leadership classes project, class projects have always, have all been teen mental health. And so I think that's crucial right now. So, you know, I, I don't know the, the exact place. I was looking at all the different kind of activities and, you know, the, the youth participation and so on, so forth. And there were some more that were more than others, but I just think that that has to be continued focus for us to remind ourselves that we're, we're helping to build that self-esteem and those connections between those kids and hopefully improve their, you know, emotional and physical well-being. In terms of singles, I do think that it, one thing I see lacking in the city is, is entertainment in areas where we, you know, like my girlfriend and I, when we wanna go out, we usually go outside of the city because, you know, unless we're going to dinner, if we wanna do something else, we wanna listen to music or, you know, whatever. And I think that, you know, I know, I know Sunset had that idea about possibly putting in the amphitheater, but I think that, you know, we would need private capital to do this, but I think to the extent we can prioritize, you know, facilities and/or events that will help keep people here on Friday and Saturday night instead of going to Pleasant Town or, you know, Walnut Creek or Danville or whatever. I'm partial to music, but, you know, so maybe I can use that as an example, but, you know, if you think, we often say, well, where are we gonna go? Well, there's nowhere to go in San Ramon, very few places in Danville, maybe. Pleasant has, you know, a little bit of a, you know, more than active scene at night in some other cities. So I do think that is one area that, that the city probably hasn't, you know, we're such a family-oriented community, which is wonderful, but I do think to the extent we can keep people such that they don't have to go outside the city to, for entertainment and socializing, it'd be terrific.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, over to vice mayor Veros.
Hi, Robert. Thank you for applying for this position. My question for you, what strategies would you implement to develop sports and community programs that not only serve our local residents, but also attract visitors and promote tourism in our community?
I mean, I think we have a pretty full boat of programs. You know, there are some newer sports like cricket and badminton that, you know, I'm not sure whether we fully kind of met the demand in those areas. You know, I know we have soccer and basketball and, you know, so on, so forth. But I do think that you have a good point that if we can promote, you know, sports tourism and where people are coming here for the weekend and staying at the Marriott and here and there and eating here and, you know, as a father who's had one of my kids play, you know, college soccer, we did the tour and spent a lot of money, especially when they were, when she was kinda middle and late teens. And so I do think that's a fantastic idea. I, I do think that the, having the new cricket minority team, what do we call it?
Minor league.
Minor league, yeah, yeah. Is a fantastic idea. And maybe we can piggyback on top of that and, you know, I mean, we can focus on each of the sports, but I do think the more that we can kind of promote and maybe use some of the tourism websites and the guy who owns Club Sport, who is now the, I forget, it's the Discover Ceremony, to the extent that we can leverage that to bring more people in and spend their weekends here, it can help us maybe narrow the budget gap a little bit, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so this is your last question. So this is going pretty quick. You know, we had like a 20-minute time slot here, but you got a few minutes left. So I'll give you the last question and I'm gonna have a statement and then, then a question for you. So here's my statement. San Ramon has a limited budget and a growing demographic diversity. We especially have a fast-growing senior population. How well do our parks currently respond to the needs of our senior or mobility impaired residents? And what can we reasonably do to make improvements, given that there's so many other competing priorities for our limited funding? Be specific and cite specific parks and areas of concern if you have.
You, the first part of your question was, how well is our parks doing or serving?
Yeah, how well are we meeting the needs of our senior community or, or mobility impaired community?
I don't have that much experience with the impaired community. I know, I know we have the senior center and, you know, there are a number of activities and, you know, over the last month, I think they went to, you know, Golden Gate Bridge and, you know, in the city and so on, so forth. That's wonderful. You know, as someone who's not technically a, a senior citizen yet, but it's, you know, it's on the horizon for me, I'm 64, that, you know.
You're a senior.
Pre-16. You know, I sell real estate and, you know, I do put people in communities, you know, these kinda one-stop-shop communities where they can play pickleball and badminton and shuffleboard and they have, you know, bingo. And, and I know we do some of that at the senior center, but I think to the extent that maybe we can look at best practices of what some other communities are, have done for their seniors, you know, I do think there's probably a real estate component as well, especially those that are in two-story houses. And, you know, Prop 19 will make that a little bit easier, but if they move, but I do think that is somewhat of an underserved community. You, you asked me to be specific, Mark.
Yeah, on parks in particular. Any, any particular parks that maybe aren't needing the, meeting the needs of our seniors?
I, I actually don't know the answer to that question. I would be making it up if I did. But, yeah, I just think, you know, for, as I looked at the kind of landscape, it seemed to me that, you know, we really need to focus on youth, seniors, and then actually, you know, to your question, kinda how do we keep people here with social activities, entertainment? And I really haven't kinda done a deep dive on, on this, you know, this, what we offer the seniors compared to what we could, but I do think that they're a really important part of this community and, you know, their grandparents and grandmothers and, and we need to find a way through, you know, activities and keeping them here to kinda, you know, keep the community, you know, diverse and, and lively and kinda connected.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you. All right, well, that was it for the questions. That went pretty quick. I'm gonna give you a chance to, to give any closing comments. Our, our questions were very specific to particular areas, but you might have some other things that you wanna talk about or something during the questions, maybe that came to mind you wanna get off your chest. So please feel free to do that at this time and we'll give you another two minutes.
Yeah, you know, as I was thinking about the, the opportunity, you know, I am on the Arts Advisory Commission Committee, Commission, I think, today and, you know, we've gotten some exposure there to even kind of a subgroup of people that I never knew existed. Our arts is really amazing. And, you know, I think that I have a certain set of skills and experience and background of, you know, like to consider myself a consummate team player and on the other hand, I've led big teams and big organizations from cradle to grave and, you know, initiation to deployment. And I think that my general experience is that it's good to have fresh ideas come in and fresh perspectives and different perspectives. And that's what kinda creates change. And I like to think that I do have good ideas and, you know, I'm flexible and, and, you know, hopefully I'm a good listener and, you know, the, you know, starting the measure N, you know, team from scratch was no easy feat, especially since none of us knew what we were doing. And to be able to kinda, almost, almost like a startup company, lift it off the ground with, you know, some people knew each other, some people didn't, required a certain set of skills and it was, you know, it was not an easy challenge. And, you know, the city, city council couldn't help us and, you know, the, the police department couldn't help us and, you know, we were looking around going, is anybody gonna help us get this thing off the goal line? But, um.
30 seconds.
Pardon me?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. And, and I think that I have the leadership skills to, to be able to pull that off and to work with people and to listen and to, you know, pivot and to, and I think those skills would benefit, you know, the arts community, arts and community services. And I'm really passionate about the area, you know, sports have been, you know, I have two knee replacements, that's because I played basketball until I was 55 and, you know, I hike seven miles a day. And so having an opportunity to help contribute to the kinda, this incredible diverse community who is really close is, would be a privilege. You know, there's nothing I like better than going to like the Art and Wind Festival and watch and just say, it's amazing, this community that we have. Everybody kinda loves each other and everybody in the city and you guys and the police and the fire, just incredible group of people to be around.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Robert. Again, well, thank you for your interest in this position. Thank you for what you've done in the city in a lot of different areas and different committees and measure N and all that. Really means a lot. And we do have a couple more interviews to do tonight, so we'll let you know one way or the other what, what the outcomes are. But again, on behalf of the city council, thank you again for your service. Thank you for your application.
All right.
See ya.
All right. Good luck, Robert.
Nice, Robert.
All right. Next, we've got Will Dorlick. Hmm? Yeah. And this is, uh, this is our last in-person interview coming up. It's time. You can if you want, but you got a microphone that you gotta speak into on your left or on your right. Nope. Yes, we can move it. All right.
I think better on my feet.
Good evening, Will. You're the, you're the last one remaining between us and Netflix, so.
Well, now you know how it feels to interview the teen council. I have no sympathy for you. You remember. Richard, good evening.
All right, well, good evening, so.
City council members?
Here's, uh, here's how it's gonna work tonight. First of all, thank you for coming in and for your reapplication.
Thank you for the invitation.
For the services commission. Uh, we're, we've got about a 20-minute time block here for you and we will give you the opportunity for a two-minute opening and then use whatever time you need there in that two minutes. Then each council member has one question and we'll start with council member Adler, then council members Wayneette, council member Rubio, vice mayor Veros, and then myself. Two minutes for each of those questions and then we'll give you two minutes at the, at the very end for, to kinda wrap it up and close anything else you wanna say. So we will have a timer. We'll try to give you a heads up when you got about 30 seconds left if you start getting close to that. And just a reminder, this, this session is being recorded.
Excellent.
And with that, we.
We can just start with questions if you want.
Well, it's up to you.
If you want me to start off with a statement, I didn't, I didn't create a statement.
Well, you don't, you don't need a written statement or anything else, but if you wanna just, anything you wanna say and, and when you're done with that, we'll get into the questions.
It might be better to wrap up with what I wanna say, so why don't we just start with questions?
All right, we'll jump right into it.
Gives me more time for questions.
Sure. Well, well, no, it's still two minutes for questions.
Oh, it's still two minutes, okay. Well, then I'll get you to Netflix a lot quicker.
All right. Let's go over to council member Adler.
Hi, Will, thanks for being here.
Absolutely, thanks for your service.
Sure. My question, I'm gonna give you my question and you got two minutes to answer it. Recently, the city of San Ramon's has had to manage budget challenges with more limited financial resources. Now, given the number of parks our city currently has, how would you balance between investing in current park infrastructure and adding more parks? You can start now.
Well, there are a couple of areas where the parks have been considered for many years, including the Woodlot. That's one that we've looked at for many years off and on. So I believe it's at 62 now, plus or minus, at the park. So, you know, it, it's critical to maintain the integrity of the, of the parks, especially equipment, especially looking at it from an inclusive standpoint, which is one of the keys of the master plan, right? Inclusiveness, connection, you know, conservation and quality and quantity. So quality should always come first, meaning that we should have a high level of standards regarding the, the parks, both from a services standpoint as well as from a hardware standpoint. You know, there's just a meantime between failure for, for equipment, excuse me, number one, and number two, there, you know, there are updates that are required by law for the, for the equipment, you know, regarding that. So staff does a great job in balancing that and the CPI, I mean, the CIP. They, they do a great job in managing that process and keeping it on the, on the budget. And, and so, you know, there was a require, there was a call from many public comments over the last year to increase the number of dog parks because of the number of people who thought the pandemic would never end. And there was, you know.
30 seconds.
How many?
30.
30 seconds. So, you know, we need to balance that. There's a quality, quantity, which is one of the key components in the master plan, as well as inclusiveness. So balancing those two elements is very important, but maintaining the current parks as we plan for future parks as the city continues to expand, very important, but also providing additional parks from development funds, such as we're seeing it with Heritage Park and other parks within the CityWalk area. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Will. Over to council member Wayneette.
Hey, Will, good evening.
You too, thanks. Thanks for coming to the Arts Advisory.
Yeah, thank you for having me. So my question is, what's your approach to evaluating whether a park, project or program delivers added value to our community?
Well, first and foremost, you're gonna go out to the community and look for feedback. I mean, that's one of the key areas that I think staff has done very, very well over the course of the last couple of years. Looking for feedback and you also want to provide the, again, quality versus quantity, you know, paradigm to that. Now, we do have a 50% return objective, right? Return on investment 50%, you know, that's a benchmark that you can measure by, but it's not a hard and fast benchmark, right? We have a benchmark of a certain number of acres per thousand, you know, residents. You know, we've never approached that, but it guides our decisions as we go forward, right? And we probably never would have the ability just looking at the land unless we include the lake and, and, and all the, the trails and the open space, right? But it's a benchmark. So that 50% recovery is one of those benchmarks. So we get the feedback, but we also wanna make sure that we're not, as our community becomes more diverse, you know, both economically as well as ethically and culturally, we wanna make sure that we're not leaving people behind that have the ability, not from a financial standpoint, but from a willingness standpoint to participate in the programs. So good example, we just had a presentation at the last meeting on the nature programs. Now, did any of those nature programs hit that 50% recovery objective? No, they did not. But are they programs that should be continued since they've only been about two years in existence to, to, to really get that feedback and see how we can, you know, mature them into, into good, good programs? Yes. So it's always gonna be that balance, availability, feedback from the community and the programs that we really feel the community is resonating with.
Okay. Thank you. Over to council member Rubio.
Hello, Will, thank you for joining us tonight. My question for you is, what programs can we implement for young and/or single adults in San Ramon who are seeking more social connections and a healthier lifestyle?
Hmm. Well, there are, there are programs that are, that are there, right? So we have a lot of programs. So, we have a lot of programs within the athletic area, within the gym, so we do have encouraging programs within the gym space that are open gyms. You know, we have also taken a number of the tennis courts and converted them into pickleball courts. And, you know, also, you know, we are continuing adding other facilities like the cricket pitch we just added, you know, which brings in not just young people, but a diverse population. Then, you know, we're looking at the conversion for the Doerty Station, you know, Community Center to the Community Arts Center, which has provided programs for music, for art, and we've already had two druided shows which were just for community members, right? And it was community members from elementary school, high school, to senior citizens. So, bringing, you know, that younger demographic together with that. Then, of course, we have other programs such as the, you know, the Sunday concerts and et cetera, that do attract not just families, but do attract young adults. You know, the young adults are a difficult segment, you know, because, you know, they probably commute, and it becomes difficult to include them in some of those programs. So, we need to look at a diverse program, you know, agenda that brings in music, art, sports, and, you know, maybe culinary, and bring them together and center it on that community arts center, and really blossom that into a, you know, that tough demographic between 21 and, you know, maybe 35.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Over to Vice Mayor Rose.
I knew you'd be last.
Hi, Will. Thank you very much for serving in our commission, as commissioner for such a long period, and...
It's an honor to serve the community. Thank you.
Thanks for reapplying for this position. So, my question for you, what strategies would you implement to develop sports and community programs that not only serve our local residents, but also attract visitors and promote tourism in our community?
Well, one of those areas that we've developed over the last couple of years is working with the cricket community. You know, there is the November tournament that has been very, very successfully participated with international, you know, participation as well as outside of the community. So, you know, providing the facilities and the, you know, the community facilities as well as the sports facilities, as well as the community, you know, volunteers coming together, you know, provides us with that opportunity. So, increasing that capacity, you know, leveraging the new facilities that we have, you know, the city center, the evolving city walk area, as we're getting a cohesive strategy with the city walk and the city center and the city shops, that really provides a little bit more momentum to bring in, if you want to say tourism, but to bring in sports tournaments, you know, et cetera. We've seen that with art, where we just had some art shows at the Doerty Valley, Doerty Station Center, that incorporated other areas from the Tri-Valley coming in. And that was very successful, and they had that just about a month ago. So, bringing that tourism in, cooperating with Discover San Ramon, as well as incorporating the other cities and Visit Tri-Valley, I think there's so much that we can offer now that the facilities are there, the restaurants are there, the community, you know, engagement is there, and the desire to really move forward with that is quite strong.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right, Will. That was four out of the five questions. You're on the last question now. That went pretty quick.
Holy cow.
Yeah. So, I'm your last one. I'll have a statement here first, and then I'll get into my question.
Okay.
So, here's a statement. San Ramon has a limited budget and growing demographic diversity. We especially have a fast-growing senior population. So, here's the question. How well do our parks currently respond to the needs of our senior or mobility-impaired residents, and what can we reasonably do to make improvements, given that there's so many other competing priorities for our limited funding? Try and be specific and cite specific parks and areas of concern, if you're able.
Sure. Excellent. Yeah, I mean, the senior community and the senior advisory and the senior foundation are integral parts of the San Ramon community, as well as have the attention of the Parks and Community Services Commission. So, good examples, number one, the farm, right? There's a lot of opportunity that the farm creates for seniors. But if we just look at the Alcosta Senior Center and see what is happening there, staff has really embraced that. Quite honestly, during the pandemic, that was probably where the Parks and Community Services staff shone the brightest. Their outreach to the senior community and getting them involved in the city and keeping them involved in the city was so significant, and such a great job by them. But if we look at the Senior Community Center, there's a few things that are happening out there, getting the exercise equipment out there, we're looking for grants for that to, you know, to move forward with that. But one of the most significant things that has happened over the last year or so at the Senior Center to provide inclusion is the revitalization of the gardens. Those were basically thrown under the bus, you know, for years because it was a slope, it wasn't cultivated well, the watering system was not well. The staff has brought that back so that the gardens at the Senior Community Center are thriving now. And that's really important because it does not only drive senior population there, but a general community population there. And the thing that is most important when you're looking at a senior program is that it also involves other members of the community, because that's how everything stays vital. So, the gardens, great example of, you know, bringing the senior community, you know, into a focus and, you know, pun intended, really flowered and flourished. And then, if you're looking at how the teen council provides a lot of interaction with the senior community, you also see that, you know, that provides a connection, and has been a very successful program with the teen tech days. So, as we continue to focus on the seniors, as we continue to get support in transportation from the county, and we continue to, you know, bring those programs and work with the foundation and the advisory council, we see that as a really growing and very impactful demographic in the city.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So, now, you mentioned at the beginning, you might save a little time at the end for a closing statement. The time is yours now to, you know, our questions were pretty focused on certain topics of interest for us. But there's certainly probably something that you want to get off your chest, that you might want to convey to us, and this is your time, two minutes.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions, anything that I've answered or responded to? No? Okay, great. So, my involvement with the city of San Ramon, you know, almost from the day that I moved here, I got involved with Parks and Community Services. My first assignment was unofficial, but I got bands. I got musicians. We got hired, if anybody remembers the Black and White Party, and also at the Arts and Wind Festival. So, from there, my good friend and colleague for many years, Kathy Hyman, said, well, why don't you do this? Which was my first step onto a committee with the Arts Advisory Committee and spent 10 years there, as well as with the Arts Foundation. So, my commitment, you know, to the city, to the Tri-Valley is strong, and it continues. And I look forward to the opportunity to continue, you know, to grow and to provide, you know, my service as a servant, you know, on the commission, because really, Parks and Community Services is where the community comes together. You know, nice roads are great, no potholes are great, you know, making sure that everything is clean and works, even if the fountains take a little while. But it's the services, it's the Parks and Community Services, it's the arts, it's the parks, it's the athletics that brings the community together. It's the core that really makes San Ramon the city that it is, you know? And even with budget cuts, there are, you know, so many things that the staff does well and does right. And my job on the commission is not to manage staff, you all know that pretty well. My job on the commission is to offer guidance, strategy, you know, bring my experience. Heck, we tried to bring the fireworks back so many times. And so, I just would look forward to the opportunity to continue my service to the community that I've lived in for 30-plus years and that I have given my service to in many, many areas, and that's what I would ask. I would ask for your vote of confidence to continue my service to the city on the Parks Commission. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Will. Well, that wraps it up. So, we are done with the interviews for the evening, and we're gonna take a few minutes. We're gonna talk amongst ourselves and figure out what our next step is, but we'll get the answer to you one way or the other.
Okay.
This evening, and...
What's on Netflix? What am I missing?
I don't know. Ask my kids. They watch them more than I do, but...
The best one to look right now is Four Seasons, so look at that.
Okay.
Do you know that one? Oh, okay.
Noted.
That was great.
But thank you for your service. Over the many, many years you've been a San Ramon resident, your service in committees and commissions and throughout the Tri-Valley area, so we thank you for that. On behalf of the city council, we appreciate your reapplying, and again, we'll let you know.
Great. Well, I look forward to continue my service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Good night. So, that was...
Want me to go to the other?
Uh, you can leave it open.
Thank you.
So, the last candidate that we had was a, by application only, that was Lawal Tijwani, I believe, on travel somewhere and unavailable. So, please be sure to consider that application as well as we deliberate here this evening. Before we kind of get into any kind of, you know, thoughts, comments, selections, priorities, and things like that, I just want to reiterate some of the things I said at the outset, that, you know, obviously, this is an important position, and we heard a lot from a lot of good candidates this evening. I think we saw some pretty strong applications, we heard some pretty strong interviews, but again, remember to balance what you may have seen in an interview or what you may have read in an application with kind of all the aspects of some of the things we ought to consider, you know, in making a selection. Second?
Can we get like a few minutes break?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, well, yeah, we'll take a couple of minutes to kind of review your notes, and what I'd like you to do is, as you're reviewing your notes, you know, we said at the outset, we were gonna, we need to pick four commissioners, but we also need to pick a couple wait-listed individuals. So, what I'm thinking we do, just to kind of get the process going, is everybody, let's focus not necessarily on rank ordering, one through 10 or whatever we saw this evening, just, but there are at least six that we gotta talk about and decide on tonight, based on what we said. So, why don't we just start with the top, you know, think about your top six, and then we'll go from there, and we'll kind of pick one at a time, and we'll talk about that here in a minute. But take some time. Give me a thumbs up when you're ready, after you've sort of racked and stacked maybe the top six. Okay?
I'll just take a use break, restroom, and come back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. We're back from break here, so let's do the deliberation. What I asked you before was, you know, identify at least the top six, and what I'm thinking is, we just start off by saying, okay, can we all agree on, you know, who's like, who's in your top, you know, four? Like, who's your, whether it's your number one or number two, if I throw out a name, is that name in your top four? And if it is, then we'll move on to the next name, and we don't need to have a whole lot of deliberation. And in that vein, let me just throw out a name. I, you know, to start with, I like Kyle Levy, and he's in my top four, and does anyone, everyone have him, or in your top six at least?
Yes.
Top four?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor. Is it okay if I can share what I'm using as a parameter?
Sorry. I don't understand.
Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. If you want to share in terms of what your metric, your rubric is, on what you're thinking about, yeah.
His Siri is going off in his pocket.
My Siri is like acting up.
She's speaking up for, yes.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, I kind of talked about what I was looking for at the very beginning, but I do have some other criteria I've been thinking about, too, but go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So, you want me to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
But let's leave names out of it for now.
Oh, yeah, no names. Only, I want to see, share what criteria I'm looking for. What is my guiding principle?
Right.
So, that's what I want to share. So, thank you, Mayor. So, just to make sure that the process that I use, the thought process, in order to select any applicant in this interview process, or even my previous interview process, right? So, the key elements that I look at is community representation... So the key elements that I look at is community representation and community engagement. That's my first priority. So, and then the second thing is definitely community education. Because that shows for me that how committed is the candidate to learn about our community, understand about the process procedures. Because the process procedures in our, that we use at City Council is totally different from any corporate side, especially like Brown Act and all these process procedures. So those things, most of those things can be learned through community education. Because if you're not part of the process, or if you're not part of the commission or committee, these things you can learn from the community education. That's why I put emphasis on community education. And also experience, that's community experience, especially participating in committees or commissions or nonprofit organizations, or even profit organizations. That serve our community, right? So that also my key point. And then, last but not least, but I do like to see fresh ideas. Because, you know, our communities' demographics are changing. And it's a multi-dimensional demographics. When I say it's a different, like age-wise, ethnicity-wise, or race-wise, or there are a lot of different, multi-dimensional demographic changes happening in our cities. So I would definitely want to get fresh ideas from candidates so that they can serve, they understand what is our demographic, so that they can serve in a right way. So these are my key pillars that I use to select a candidate. That's from my side. Thanks.
Okay. That was very good, very helpful. Thank you. Anyone else want to share what they're thinking of?
For sure. So for me, one of the things I really think are really important, especially in this position, is somebody who, making sure that we have people with different demographics and insights, life experiences, because it's really something that is representative, will be representative, different members of our community. Because each one of them has something to bring. And I think if we can kind of try to identify, who are those people who will bring those different perspectives, and together make a very cohesive, comprehensive commission? I think that's the goal for me, to see that happen, that there's. I then, I also thought about in their answers, their responses, the richness and creativity and their diversity of ideas. You know, how much were they, you know, able to pull from those life experiences and perspectives and bring to the table in this space and forum? The third is, I think it's kind of like, I'm looking, I think, for a combination. Like we, as a council and the commissioners, we should always be looking to create a bench for that next generation. Because if we don't, we will find ourselves one day with very few people to mentor others. So I think there's, for me, there was a combination of old and sort of like new and experienced members and the importance of having that somehow. So that's about it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else want to share their ideas? Yeah, Robert?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Vice Mayor and Councilmember Rubio. I will share my thoughts. I sat here in the, from the position of a resident to see how can this commissioner make those decisions as a resident for the benefit of the community? So from my perspective, it was taking in totality of their life experience, their resume, but also how they presented themselves today. Wasn't really looking for an answer, as much as I was looking for more how they were thinking and how they approached situations in real life. And did that juxtapose to what the resume stated, to their life experiences? And I saw some of that today. And those were, I think, for me, highly valuable because it demonstrates a life skill that I believe that that, there is no handbook for this position. So you sort of have to attain the knowledge by, by living through it. And so I saw that with the great list of candidates today. And for me, those were the criteria that I, in addition to what my fellow councilmembers up here said. So thank you.
All right. Richard, any thoughts? Yeah.
Well, I think it's important that the candidates have really gone out of their way to understand what Parks Commissioner does and really specific knowledge of what that commission does. And it's important because it shows that you care enough to, you know, have listened to them, maybe speak not only at the commission, but, you know, gone out and looked at some of the parks and what we offer here in San Ramon. I think it's really important you have that knowledge. I mean, it's important that you have a good background in other things. But specifically, I think it's important that you understand the job. And I also, I like the, you know, new ideas, a new thought on how we can bring in more people to, you know, sports events and to not only sports, but for music. And what can we do to attract people to our community? I think those ideas that you, you know, he's gone out of, he or she has gone out of their way to think about that, you know, revenue and, you know, letting the rest of the East Bay know what we offer here in San Ramon. So that's really important. You know, I, I don't know. I have some private thoughts too, but I'm not sure what I should say here. This is an open. No.
But it is important, you know, that people really have taken the time.
Taken the time to understand the job. And it's important that they speak to us about that, I really think. You can't really, I think you're stepping over an important part of the process by not communicating verbally to us about it. You know, that's just the way I think.
Okay. All right, good. I like all your thoughts and your ideas. I agree. I think we need to make sure that whoever we select, you know, has at least demonstrated some understanding of our diverse community. And there's a lot of aspects of diversity to understand. And we talked about from young to kids to seniors to cultural to et cetera, et cetera. I do, I also agree, community experience is very important. They've been involved, they've kind of been engaged in different things. They've kind of understand what our parks and our programs are all about because they're users or they've coordinated with parks. They've been involved in different things. Same thing on the fresh ideas. You know, you don't have to necessarily be an expert in parks and community services. I think, you know, a lot of the candidates could be easily trained based on their demonstrated potential. But maybe they showed some good ideas that we ought to consider. I also think they need to have a good understanding of our city, not just what's going well, but an understanding of, you know, of our parks. They've been to our parks, or they've been involved in different programs and services, different community events and that sort of thing. And they understand our challenges, challenges with finances and budget and that sort of thing. So, and, you know, many of the candidates tonight, almost all of them, but, you know, most of them were able to articulate. Another thing I think is really important, that's just an understanding of our, you know, our parks, our trails, open space, recreation master plan. And if you don't have a basic understanding of that and the four guiding principles that are listed within that, then it's gonna be hard to kind of keep us on the same track. We have a master plan, and yes, it's a living, breathing document. But at the same time, it is a guiding document. And they should have demonstrated some kind of understanding of that, or at least the basic tenets of it. So having, kind of having said that, I still want to, I'd still like to just kind of throw out a name. And if we all kind of are okay with that, based on what we've all expressed here, if these, if these names kind of fit these categories, then we don't need to have a long deliberation and go, every, every council member talk about every candidate. And I'll just thought, you know, I have one that I thought did really well. I'm not saying he's my one, two, three, or four. But I, you know, I think Kyle Levy, who is on the planning, or the Parks Commission right now, I think he did a masterful job in the interview. And he's got the background, the credentials, and the experience on the commission already. And I'd just kind of like to see if we all can agree, at least on, one of the four slots goes to Kyle.
Yes, um, yes. And I'm wondering, Mayor, if you might be, just want us to list our top four? And then we can go from there and see where we have intersection, intersectionality in our choices? And then we can go one by one?
Maybe we do that, everyone lists the top four on that worksheet? And then if we have agreement on one, or two, or three, or maybe all four, then we'll move on to the last two for deliberation.
Yeah.
All right, let's do that. Everyone identify, you don't need to score them, just put an X by their name. Huh?
The box is the X.
Yeah, just in the box.
An X? Then we'll pass it down.
All right, Joan, just take a second. You don't necessarily need to add up or give a numerical score. Just is there, is there some common thread that, take a minute, but is there somebody that everybody picked? No pressure.
Maybe everybody or the majority?
Well, let's start with unanimous first.
Okay.
All five councilmembers chose the same, represented, we all chose, you all chose the same.
What?
All five changed.
All five of you chose the same four candidates.
Wow.
Wow.
Let me just confirm.
Grand slam.
You want to buy some lotto?
He's like, I'm gonna buy the Lotto ticket.
I know. Seriously.
I think that's a first.
I stand corrected.
Okay. Now, give us, was there just one off? So we had at least three? Who are the three that we all agree on?
You all agree on Kyle Levy. You all agree on Partha Mitra. You all agree on Will Dorlich. And you all agree on Vinesh Shetty. Or almost, I'm sorry.
Vasant?
That's the next, Vasanth, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so, well, what?
So the majority, so four out of five supported Vasanth?
Correct. My apologies, yes, you are correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, four out of five, I'm not sure how we want to proceed with that. But I mean, that's majority right there. Unless the person that didn't want Shetty wants to try to convince at least two other councilmembers why their pick is better. Okay. Okay, so, all right. And to, well, let me just make sure. We're all in agreement on the top three. We said Levy, Mitra, and Dorlik. Okay? And we have four out of five with Shetty. Does anyone want to change their vote on that? Or their thought on that?
No. No.
And I don't either.
No, I don't have any change.
Do you want to change?
No.
Okay. All right, so then.
We have the majority there?
Yeah, I would entertain a motion for the first four. And we don't have to be all in agreement on it.
I'll move to approve the first, the four candidates that have received the unanimous and/or majority vote.
I second.
Okay, any, actually, let me, let me hold off before we do that. Let me open this up for public comment. Because I didn't do that earlier. But we do have to have an opportunity for public comment. Do we have any speaker cards?
There are no speaker cards, and there was no written comments.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll close public comment then. All right, then we have a motion for.
One second. We want to include the waiting list also, right?
The what?
We're gonna move a vote on the waitlist, I think, second.
But we should do only one single motion. Why you want to do two motions?
I think that's what he.
Let's do one single motion with the four, and then finish the waiting list. And then we should make one motion.
Okay, we can do that. Well, I just want to make sure, before we move on to do the waitlist, that we're in agreement on the top four.
I think we already agreed, right?
Yeah. I think I'm comfortable stating that we've chosen our top four, based on the results. I mean, four out of five for Vasanth is, that's more than half.
Okay. So then, with that, then those are the top four, that the majority of the council has selected. Now let's get into discussion on the next two. Why don't we do the score sheet on who the next two are? But rank them one and two, because we have to have them ranked ordered. And do not include in your consideration the four that we've already selected as our primary selectees.
Thank you.
Do we, are we gonna name the four? Have we named the four? I just want to make sure of that.
Yeah, the four are Kyle Levy, Partha Mitra, Will Dorlik, and Vasanth Shetty.
And Councilmember Adler? Right now, we're choosing, and you have to rank one and two, the waitlisted people?
So only two of them you need to pick?
Yeah, just write a one and a two next to the last, the next two people that you think are the top candidates, excluding the four that we've already selected. And your time begins now.
He wants to get to his Netflix. He's, he's like, I gotta get home.
Ten seconds.
I'm kidding. I'm just kidding. He's like, the Netflix.
Yeah, this next round might be a little tougher. We'll see how it goes here. And it, we might generally come up with the majority with the same names, who knows? Don't, have no idea. But then, it's the ranking of the one and the two that, that might be the, where we have a little more discussion.
So, for the number one position, four out of five have chosen Robert Bickel.
Okay.
For the number two position, three have chosen it as number two, and one has chosen it as number one, and that would be Carol Lopez-Lucy.
Okay, say the, say the last part. I got the name, but what was the other part?
Three councilmembers chose her in the number two spot, and one councilmember chose her in the number one spot. So, she had a total of four, four councilmembers placing her on the waitlist, and that was Carol Lopez-Lucy.
Got it. Okay. So, she was saying, you understand that?
So, Robert is number one, because he got four?
Four out of five, that's like, yeah, that's already, that's 80% of the vote. And then, Carol Lopez received, three people voted for her to be in the second place, one person voted for her to be in the first place, and then the fifth person did not vote for her.
That is correct.
So, at least four out of five put her.
Yeah.
In the waitlisted category.
In the top two, in the waitlist category.
That is true.
Okay, so, to me, what that tells us is, we go with Bickel as the first waitlisted, and Lopez-Lucy as the second waitlisted. And unless there's any discussion on that, or any major objections to that, then at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I will move.
I'm not, I'm not trying to ramrod this thing through, but.
No, I don't.
I'm open to any more discussion on this. If you've got, you know, a strong opinion about anybody else, this is your time to, to say it.
I don't personally have, I'm happy to make a motion if everybody else is okay with that. Okay, so, I move to approve, to appoint Kyle Partha, Will Avansans to the Parks and Community Services Commission, and in ranked order, waitlist, Robert Bickel and Carol Lopez, first and second respectively, to the Parks and Community Services Commission.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Any abstaining? Okay, motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to Kyle Levy, Partha Mitra, Will Dorlich, Vasant Shetty on primary, and to Robert Bickel and Carol Lopez-Lucy as waitlisted, one and two respectively. Is there any further discussion?
No, I just want to congratulate everybody, and also express that I was quite impressed. This was a very competitive field that showed up today, and I feel very confident and good that we have great leadership on that, to continue on the Parks and Community Services.
Yeah, I would like to thank all applicants for taking your time. It's all been your personal time. We appreciate for stepping up to serve our community. Looking forward to work with you on the selected candidates, and looking forward, the candidates who are not selected still in the community, I'm sure you're always there in the community for the services. So, thank you very much.
All right.
I want to, sorry, thank the candidates, but also thank the staff for, it's like herding cats with the scheduling. So, thank you, guys, and thank you for working through, and with the, with the film crew as well, and for the candidates. Very competitive space, so. And thank you to the councilmembers as well for actually making this a really pleasant experience with the technology, the timing, and everything. I think we, I think we got our mojo down when it comes to, when it comes to the procedure here, so, thank you.
All right. Anything? Richard?
I, I enjoyed working with you guys on this. You know, I had a little bit of issue of putting the order and everything.
I was just going to say that I think we all agreed on the three, really, and I just, the fourth was a little more difficult for me, but this is a new process for me, and, and I have to balance a lot of different thoughts in my head. But I like the way it all turned out, and I like everything about that order. So, anyways, glad that we, we were pretty efficient tonight with this whole process, I think, so. Thanks.
All right, and again, I share the same thanks to all the candidates, and congratulations to those that were selected, and thank you to the council, thank you to our staff, and everyone for this process. I think it went well. We can talk more about tomorrow. Tomorrow might be tougher for Planning Commission, and, and maybe longer. But again, thank you, and with that, meeting is adjourned. Good night.